18, 2022 at 6:04 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD central office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Close captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing, and we have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. Tonight is an opportunity for the board to take part in active listening, and while we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio record their remarks. We will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so colleagues, please listen carefully.
This is Sharon Vane. I'm a parent of a Bowie High School student and a 2022 AISD graduate. I'm calling to express my strong support for intellectual freedom and inclusive literature and lessons in our schools. My students benefit greatly from ELA curriculum that guides them in reading books from a wide variety of authors on a wide variety of themes. They benefit greatly from attending schools with libraries that offer them choices and that offer them titles that, in the legendary Dr. Rudinson's bishop's words, serve as mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. As I see the spike in censorship in surrounding districts across Texas and throughout the country, I implore you to preserve access in our schools to all kinds of books and all kinds of stories. It will not only make our district's kids better students, it will make them better people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Candace Hunter. I'm an Austin ISD parent. I'm calling about item 5.1, goal progress monitoring of 2.1 and 3.1, reading and math, where African-American students identified as economically disadvantaged, third graders would demonstrate achievement on or above grade level. Based on the school year 21-22 goal of 18%, an actual of 15% in reading, and the same population and goal for math with the school year 21-22 goal of 8% with an actual of 12%. I would like to know the specifics of how the district will reach its goal of 60% by August 2026. Thank you.
My name is Marie. I'm a parent. Leadership committed to the board and community in board meetings to posting meetings and information on socials, including Facebook. Please resume meetings on Facebook expeditiously to increase access and participation. Asking the board to review policies and board procedures related to conflicts of interest, policies for board decisions and communication that are inclusive of the entire board, not just one trustee or the president. This is important for transparency and oversight, and it's what we elected our board to do, not just one member. Also, as a policy, AISD has not used wash daygoes without board approval, but AISD continually uses wash daygoes as their attorneys with no prior knowledge or approval from the board, including inappropriate sped training and the gapped families. Wash daygoes is giving bad and poor legal advice that is harming our children, and board legal counsel and contracts should be reviewed for appropriateness with a firm that is student-centered, focused on student outcome. The scorecard should include special education and disabled students, as well as black and brown. My kid is being discriminated against based on race and disability. I'm asking for it to stop, or documents made publicly available in news articles will highlight the inequity in Austin ISD as we seek an equity bond, but the district spends their taxpayer dollars on attorneys and settlements due to bad behaviors. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy. I'm calling in regards to the benefit of our planned PLCs. I'm a kindergarten teacher, and it's given us a wonderful opportunity to take the teaks and deconstruct, take the district lessons and make them rigorous. It's given us an opportunity to really have some great engaging lessons and to be able to collaborate with all of our teammates instead of just one. It also keeps us from having to take the work home and spend hours at home doing planning. It's become quite a huge, happy place in our planning. I don't know what we would do without it, and it's only four days in. So yay to the PLCs, and we are absolutely loving it. And I think it's going to benefit our students tenfold with the amount of time and energy that we put into the engaging lessons. Thank you.
Hi, this is a teacher at Cunningham. I'm a third grade teacher, and I just wanted to say that although we've only had it for a week, the extra hour, three hours of planning have been very beneficial to my team and to my students. I'm able to get more work done, and I'm able to be better prepared in order to have everyone be successful. I also want to give kudos to my AP, Ms. Rodriguez, at Cunningham Elementary. She has been very supportive, and she listens and very responsive to our needs, as well as helping us plan during those times and making sure that we are being successful for our kids, or in successful in turn. Thank you so much.
My name is Tyler Shaw, and I am a physical education teacher in Austin ISD. I am very concerned about our current student ratios, and I would love for the board to consider reducing our ratios further by adding additional TA positions. Currently, my school has three different spaces for physical education divided with three PE teachers. However, we are not allotted a TA for each location. This means one of our PE teachers is there with 48 or 49 six-year-olds at a time, could be between kindergarten and fifth grade, all alone. One of the spaces is outside in this heat. When we have an incident, we don't have anybody close by to assist. When we deal with that incident in appropriate manner, the other 40-odd students are left unattended. This is just a huge safety concern for me. Additionally, I have a safety concern for working in the heat for our physical education teachers with no support of fans or other optics.
My name is Natalie Carnine, and I teach fifth grade at Blazer Intermediate, and I'm talking about PLCs today. I have found this first week back really refreshing to have this time. I'm leading a team largely of brand-new teachers or new to my grade level, and it's been really wonderful to have the designated time where we are able to sit down and check in, but also dive deep into what is the teak we're teaching this week in math? What are the verbs that we see? How does this affect? Where do our students need to go? What are the common misconceptions? And look at, you know, examples from our experienced teammates of how we talk that, how we word things. And then we're able to come back later in the week and bring our student data, whether it's anecdotal data or journals, and compare them, see how it went, check back in. If we gave an assessment that week, a common assessment looking at the data from that. So I'm looking forward to having that time this week and the rest of this year to be able to really help mentor my new teammates, but also have time where we are able to work together and help raise each other up and be successful.
My name is Maggie Longhour. I'm a K-1 multi-age teacher at Cunningham Elementary School. I really appreciate the additional planning time that the district has allotted us this year. It really has benefited us actually in this first week. It's provided time to meet with our teams and a true PLC who's been able to provide really detailed instruction in our lesson plans and differentiate for, to meet the needs of all our students. It's given us a lot more time to just meet and discuss things that have worked, what doesn't work, what things we can change, and really take ideas from each other. So we really appreciate having time to meet outside of that.
Hi, my name is Ms. Rodriguez. I am an Austin ISD teacher, and I'm calling to discuss PLC time. The usual time given for PLCs has been beneficial for my team to plan high engagement lessons as well as plan for differentiation and acceleration for all students. We're also looking forward to having additional time to analyze student data to help drive our instruction. We are grateful that we have this additional PLC time during the workday because it provides the extra time needed to effectively plan for our students. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Deanna Hernandez, and I work at Cunningham Elementary. I am a fourth-grade bilingual teacher, and ever since having this extra planning time, I have been more relaxed, and it has been really great to kind of get that time to catch up and be prepared for the following day and for the next week. So thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Melissa John. I am a fourth-grade ESL teacher here at the Blazer Intermediate campus. I will be speaking on behalf of our PLCs. This extra planning time that we've been given allows our fourth-grade team to really present the data to each other so that we can discuss strengths and weaknesses of our students, and most importantly, to initiate an action plan for any changes needed for our instruction. Our goal has always been to improve, but to have the time now to really show the concrete evidence, the journals, the assessments, everything, in order to discuss how the kids are learning and growing, that's huge. It's critical to our success. And being able to have that time to collaborate really does benefit not only our team, of course, the campus, but ultimately the community as a whole. The expectations and standards have always been high at Blazer, but now these true PLCs give us the opportunity and time that we really need to elevate that rigor. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Trustees, this concludes public comment. Are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Anderson?
So I have a request related to the comment by Mr. Shaw. How, what, under what circumstances are TA placed on a campus such as a situation like Mr. Shaw described? And how are we ensuring that students and staff are not going out during the heat of the day to prevent heat stroke? So what relief are we giving should they be out, say, 12? I don't know what time lunchtime is, but what are we doing if they are going out during the heat of the day? What measures have we put in place to prevent heat stroke? Thank you.
I can speak to the ratio portion of it. And so on our website, on Human Capital, we do have staffing ratios, and we looked at teachers and students last year. We originally started at 1 to 45, and then we came back through with 1 to 30. And so what we did was, we looked across each grade level and their projected numbers, and if a campus had more than two grade levels that couldn't do 1 to 30, then that's where we added the TAs. But we can relook at whatever. I'll have to look to see what school that was and look across their grade levels now that the school started.
So if a campus has, you know, you say 1 to 30, if I'm by myself with 30 students and, you know, God forbid something happens, students get hurt.
So just in the past, so even in the past where it was 1 to whatever the class size was, they were still in there by themselves. So in those kind of cases, you'll, you send a student to the nurse or to the front office, just kind of like when you're in a classroom as a teacher, if something happens, you know, the one, you send one of the students either to go get the nurse or to go to the office.
I do remember that, but
Yeah.
In this redesign, to me, that sounds a little different. So if you have somebody, say, 35, 40 students in a situation like that, that sound like to me, you know, but that's just me. Well, I'm not going soon. I'll wait.
Let me look at the grade levels and let me figure out the schools.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trustee Anderson, regarding, excuse me, the heat, we have weather-related guidelines that have been included in the standards of service. If the temperature reaches a certain level, then we do this. For the temperature, if the next temperature increment comes, then we do this. And then we're really big on making sure that our kids are, stay hydrated and making sure that everyone has plenty of water.
So like, can you give me an example? Just say, you know, a elementary gym class, like, when do they, when, when is the last PE class? Is it before it really gets hot? Or is it, it's been so long since I was?
Well, the PE classes occur all day long, and so I can't say that it's before it gets hot and that there are no classes in the middle of the day. What they do is they adjust accordingly and make sure that they are taken into account what the temperature is at that particular point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustees, other question. Trustee Singh.
I have a question. It's, and Dr. Mays, I'm curious to know, I know that y'all sent us the heat-related guidelines. I wasn't able to access them, but can, what is, what is the temperature cutoff for PE? Or can somebody perhaps just share what that is? Sorry, sorry to make you walk up and down, Mr. Hicks. We can all check out your cool purple tie, though. I like it.
So the guidelines were, the temperature guidelines for AISD were established by secondary trainers. I think it was last year, and they were included in the standards of service then, and they're included right now. And they're based on some national information that was accumulated. And so I know that each of you has the link, and we may have sent you another link again today with the, with the guidelines in it. So actually, they're pretty liberal, to be honest with you. There are guidelines for what happens when the temperature reaches 100 degrees and guidelines for what happens when it reaches 105 degrees. Now, we aren't espousing to be outside when it's 105 degrees, but for example, with 100 degrees for PE recess, 60 minutes of exposure with five-minute water breaks is what the guideline is. And then there's some guidelines also for athletics and then fine arts and band during that time as well. We know that, for example, our football players are outside doing spring training and summertime preseason training, and they're in the heat, but it's all about the hydration and making sure that we're paying attention to what, if hopefully no symptoms develop, but making sure that we're aware of all the potential signs of anything that could possibly happen. And then for elementary kids, we absolutely don't want to even get to that point, so we're going to be very cognizant of it.
Okay, so it's 100, at 100 degrees, which we've been having, it's 16 minutes exposure with five-minute water break. Like, what does, does that mean, like, every five minutes there's a water break? Or they have water breaks for five minutes at different intervals?
Well, no, the guideline actually just says, you're right, within that 60 minutes that they would have a five-minute water break. We're going to be more liberal than that. And right now, this week, we, well, I guess it was 100 degrees the first couple of days, and it hasn't been today, but we'll continue to work and modify that and make sure that we're not doing anything that's damaging whatsoever.
Okay. I know we're going to be talking about essential areas later on, but I have some very serious concerns about this. I don't think it's safe, and I would like us to revisit the policy. So I don't know if that's something that would be appropriate, President Rodriguez, for the policy committee to consider, but I absolutely do not feel comfortable with kids being outside, and our teachers also. I think it's really cruel, to be quite honest. I hate to sound blunt, but I've, I'm really concerned about that. So that would be my request regarding, like, from a policy angle. I would also like to know, Dr. Mays, would it be possible if a trustee wanted to actually spend an afternoon with a PE teacher? Like, I would love to spend afternoon with the caller, Tyler Shaw, who called in, or another teacher who is basically saying that this is not, you know, this is problematic so that we can kind of just see with our own eyes.
So in terms of visiting campuses, of course, trustees are always welcome to visit campuses. I think that it's better to make sure that you get a good cross-section of, you know, multiple teachers. So of course, visit Tyler Shaw, but also visit other campuses where they may be, you know, having a little more success, just to get a good sense of everybody's perspective as you look at it. So we definitely would, wouldn't mind hosting teacher, or hosting trustees on those.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding the ratios, so I know, like, on paper, I think I heard Ms. Stevens say that it was 30 students to one PE teacher, correct, at the elementary level?
So no, it wasn't 1 to 30 in terms of the teacher. It was 1 to 30 adult-to-student ratio. So that could be a teacher or TA.
Oh, yeah, okay. So one adult for 30 kiddos.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And do we have any classrooms, any PE classrooms that are exceeding that right now?
I haven't. I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, we're just like in the fourth day of school. So I've collected numbers. We've got them by grade level, but I, I mean, I'd have to look specifically by grade level at this point and then go back to see what their staffing is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to Ms. Stevens' point, it is the fourth day of school. So you still have campuses going through scheduling processes and taking in students? I would say, you know, for most leaders, you usually don't settle until about the third week in terms of who's going to be where in terms of master scheduling and classrooms and stuff like that.
So we have our leveling timeline that's coming up, and we give the schools the first 10 days, which will be next Friday, when we'll actually take a hard look at numbers to go across the board, whether that's classroom teachers, whether that's the PE teachers, that kind of thing.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not really in line. I think this is one of the, I mean, yes, it's the fourth day of school. It's, it's really hard for me to, to hear some of this. I remember when we were approving the budget, we were assured that we would have enough And I'm glad that this is working at some campuses. Those are probably campuses that are fully staffed, but what today we did receive, I appreciate that Ms. Stevens' office sent us a list of all the vacancies at all of our campuses, and fully 50%, exactly half of our campuses do not have the PE staff to administer the essential areas redesign. So I just wanted to know what you were going to do about that.
So right now, I know I am part of my presentation. Right now, I have, we have four PE teacher vacancies across the district and 38 TAs. We have 208 applications in process between posting and actually hiring. I don't know how many of those are actually TAs, how many of those are actually teachers, but we'll continue to hire. So it's not, and then in those cases where we have the actual, what we call an FTE, like we have the position, we are getting substitutes in those positions. So both teacher assistant and teacher positions are eligible for teacher, or substitutes. So in those cases, we do have substitutes when we haven't hired yet.
So I think this was one of the, when I think back to when we were approving the budget, most of us up here said that we were going to hold the district accountable. I don't know what exactly that means. I know for me, it's asking these questions and getting some clear answers, so I do appreciate the answers. At the same time, this was completely predictable, I feel, and, and I really worry about the safety of our students. And when I, when I look at our board adopted values, which I can't find right now, but thank you, Trustee Lugo, the very first, very first bullet says, caring for every child to be healthy and safe. And the situation we've created, to me, does not sound healthy or safe. So I would just like to ask the administration to please consider easing up on this plan or coming up with a Plan B pretty quickly. That's just on my, I'm asking, and it may be too much management, but because it is so aligned with our number one value, I feel so strongly that I have to say something about it.
Go ahead.
So I think that the team has shared a monitoring plan that includes, of course, focus groups of principals, PE teachers. Some of that has already started. I know that this is, like you said, an agenda item that we'll be discussing in a bit, but we've shared that monitoring plan, and we will move forward with the execution of that monitoring plan, but also, again, paying close attention to student safety.
Thank you. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Boswell?
Thank you. Just in response to Trustee Singh's question about heat and policy, I think we've all been very hot. We've all been seeing it, and I've been seeing, there was a KUT piece, there's several, a Dallas Morning News piece about how the Texas UIL rules are not in line with national best practices about heat, and also about the fact that smaller bodies, because of the surface area, don't dissipate heat as well as older bodies and high school students and, you know, students participating in UIL sports under UIL guidance are required to acclimatize in the heat. That's one of the three best practices, and that's, that is, that's the only one that is required by Texas, and our elementary school students haven't done that. So I have asked the policy committee to bring forward something to talk about our heat guidelines, to make sure we are following best practices as a district. And Coach Anderson has shared what our policies are with that committee, and I think it's a question of high school, elementary, just being really, working with our medical community. So, you know, I would love support for bringing that to the policy committee and making sure we are taking care of our students as best we can. And the heat index was, you know, 107 today at one point. It's hot. And that's a reality, and I do share the concern that we do need to take care of our students and, and give all of our PE teachers the backing and the data and the support they need to make choices when they say it's too hot to be out, to make sure they have the backing to really do that, and to make sure heat stroke doesn't always show up in the moment, to make sure that our teachers know the signs of it, because it can look like lethargy, it can look like confusion. And they need to know if a kid has been at PE and comes back into the building and they're acting confused, they're not acting out, they're acting tired, maybe they're not sleepy, maybe they need to be sent to the nurse. So I appreciate that conversation, and I think it is our duty to keep our kids really safe, and it's a fact that it's really hot for a good chunk of the time we're in school. So I'll save my other comments about the essential areas for later until after we hear the presentation, but I did want to speak to that. Thank you for that. And then I just have a question about the meetings on Facebook we heard a caller ask about and why they're no longer there for people who are interested in watching them there. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Boswell. The reason we moved the meetings from Facebook to YouTube was twofold. One, it kept crashing on Facebook, and we have no idea why. And it wouldn't just crash in the moment, but it started wiping out past recordings. YouTube is much more stable, and a lot of our peer organizations in town, the city streams it on, other school districts stream it, and it seems to work for them. So we're happy with it. It's solid, and it's doing a good job for us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustees. Trustee Lugo? Jason? Sorry.
Mr. Stanford. Your last statement was, it's working very well for us. How is that measured?
It hasn't crashed.
That's your measure?
That is, compared to Facebook, which kept crashing for reasons that Facebook couldn't explain. Yes, that is a measure of it.
So has there been any consideration by the administration to look at what it means to provide access to these meetings to the public rather than just having the video not crash as the measure?
Yeah, I think
That the measure is, oh, yay, it didn't crash. That doesn't seem like
That the measure is, oh, yay, it didn't crash. That doesn't seem like, that seems like a, I'm just wondering how that was decided to be the measure.
So I think that the biggest thing that we want to do is make sure that everybody has access to view it. I think we have multiple meetings where, like you said, it did crash, which in the instance that it crashes, you don't have access. So providing a consistent method for access is what we want to do. I don't know what the troubleshooting efforts look like for, for Facebook. I think that's, of course, a more technical question and response. But for us, we're not averse to, again, whatever we need to do to provide access, providing access, so.
And if I could add on to that, recently, we had a hardware fail that prevented us from streaming the meeting on ASD TV, and our only access to it was YouTube. So its reliability is absolutely a public access benefit.
Now, am I on the right page? Because this shows that the video's not available. And it shows the comments are off. And so that's why I was just curious about your comment when you said it's working very well for us. I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know why you're getting that, that, that it's not available right now. I'll have to check on that. As far as comments, our peer districts aren't doing comments, and I think, I don't think I'm the right one to answer that question, because that wasn't my decision.
I'm looking at our council for a second, because she's- Yeah, I don't know, but I just wanted to make sure.
I don't believe this is posted on the agenda, so in terms of like, if you wanted to have a closed session consultation about, you know, comments, advisability or not, we could certainly post that for a future meeting. And I recognize this is the like response to public comment portion. But we probably need to make sure we're not getting into deliberation about stuff that we're not posted for.
That makes sense. So I have two requests. So I can submit clarifying questions if that would be helpful. It would be super helpful on my part, I think, and probably the board, if the administration comes prepared with information, rather than just responding to questions. And then the other thing would be, I would welcome a closed session conversation.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Trustees' other questions? Trustee Singh?
I just want to second that, particularly just having a conversation about that, particularly having the comments allowed on YouTube, but preferably having it on Facebook as well. And I thought I had one more question that was, but now I can't read my writing, so I think I will save it for later. Oh, oh, wait, I do have it, I do have it. Okay, there is one caller that was asking about the attorney that we're using for some, actually, you know what, I think I'll just save that for a closed session. But I do want to, I think I've already submitted a tracker question about this, but I just would like to request that we do talk about that in closed session, about the district using the same law firm that is representing the board, the Board Council, on different matters, and what kind of issues we should be considering to ensure that there is objectivity and some separation, there are no conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. When we have that conversation, will you, Kristi, will you send the agreement again to all the board members, so they can see what the processes are? It's in, it's in the agreement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustees', any other questions? If not, thank you so much. As a reminder to our community, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. And so now we'll move to the President's Report, and it's, there's two parts. The first is around the health and pandemic update. And the 4.1 is an update with Dr. Desmar Wachs, the City of Austin Medical Director and Health Authority. Dr. Wachs, thank you for joining us virtually tonight. As Austin ISD and other central Texas districts continue to welcome more students back, can you share what we need to know about the current state of COVID in central Texas and the new public health emergency around monkeypox? And I believe she was online a few minutes ago.
Dr. Reach, is she available on Zoom? Because I don't, I don't see her there anymore.
So maybe while we, she's here? If we were on phone, I'd say to hit star six, to unmute yourself, but I, that's about as technologically advanced as I, as I can. Well, I think as, as we try to fix the technical issue, I might just report on item 4.1. Oh, there you are, Dr. Wachs. Hi, welcome. Oh, you're on mute. We can see you, but we can't hear you. Our, it's our technical difficulty?
Her mic appears to be muted.
I think Dr. Reach is trying to resolve the issue. So maybe while we try to resolve the issue, Dr. Wachs, I'm going to just share a short update on, on one other item, and we'll get right back to you. Just temporarily, I'm going to move to item 4.2, the superintendent transition update, just to provide an update around the superintendent transition. So we're now into the second month and the start of the new school year, I think, as we heard our, our fourth day in school, with our interim superintendent, Dr. Anthony Mays. And for now, the board will pause the transition updates during these meetings until we have more information to share with the public, which we expect to occur following the November trustee election. As part of the President's Report, I also wanted to provide a brief update on potential resolutions and policy changes. The board could consider our commitments with the 2022 bond process. Wanted to make sure that we followed up from our meeting on August 11th. The board officers will discuss potential resolutions for the board, and these may come back to the full board in September, including labor standards, electric buses, and I think there were a few other items that we'll be bringing up. So just wanted to make sure the public was made aware of that. I think we're, we're good? We are. So Dr. Wachs, welcome.
No, she's still having-
Oh, she's still having problems, okay.
I can see her error message on her screen.
Oh, got it, okay.
Sometimes when you're connected, it's not.
Well, after star six, the only thing I know is restart your computer. And I'd welcome any other IT help from the Austin ISD Board of Trustees' IT Help Desk. I think we're going to take a pause for five minutes till the technical issue gets resolved. Yeah, I think we're going to take, we're going to take a five minute, five minute break.
Hello? Testing, one, two, three, testing?
Yes, you're on.
Just to confirm that you, you did hear me, that I'm, that we're ready for the 30-second countdown?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. We are back after taking a five-minute pause, and I apologize for the technical difficulties to the community and to Dr. Wachs. Dr. Wachs, welcome again. We wanted to, we're really happy that you're here, and we wanted to ask if you would share with us what we need to know about the current state of COVID in central Texas and the new public health emergency around monkeypox. So welcome.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's good to be here at the beginning of a new school year and talk about what we need to do to keep things open and keep our kids protected. So I'll get right on to the slides. This first slide's one that we're used to seeing. It has, shows that we're in community level low. Please excuse this entry on October 15th. We now know that we have 104 cases in hospital, and we have new cases per 100,000 down below 200, which puts us at that low level. So all that we can do to keep those case numbers down is what we're going to discuss going forward. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had 303,189 total cases of COVID-19 in our community, with 1,725 deaths. US-wide, nationwide, our seven-day average for cases is still quite high, 119,000-plus cases in seven-day period, and a total of over 93 million cases since the beginning of the pandemic have occurred in the United States. Over the past four weeks, we've seen a steady decline in the numbers of people who are hospitalized, but that still is, there's still a substantial number of individuals requiring hospitalization. And I show this because there's a sense that COVID is over, but it's not. It's still affecting people, and people are still dying. And in this right-hand side of the slide, you're going to see what has been happening in our pediatric population. This is still happening to healthy kids who didn't get the vaccine. 50% of children who are unvaccinated are requiring hospitalizations in our country. So vaccine is still something that we should be considering as- So vaccine is still something that we should be considering as one of our number one tools to protect our children from COVID-19. We've received new guidance from the CDC that came out on August 11th. And they gave us some pretty good infographics on factors that can lower the risk of transmission in our community. And so you see that there's a lower risk associated depending on the length of time that we're exposed to somebody who has COVID-19 with longer exposure time, leading to more risk. Masks are still one of those gold standards that we can use along with hand hygiene to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. And the mask, being able to prevent spread is increased when both individuals in an indoor space in particular are wearing a mask, a high quality mask, like an N95 mask will increase that protection even more so. Another thing that's been pointed out in these infographics and we've talked about in the past is that the projection of voice through singing, coughing, shouting, breathing heavily increases risk of transmission. And we've seen that in situations where individuals are in close contact and they are projecting their voice, we've seen more transmission of disease in choir situations and athletic situations where there's not good ventilation. So that's another thing that we can consider as we take steps to lower the risk of transmission. And then finally, ventilation and filtration. There've been some calculators that have been developed by the CDC that we can use, particularly in school settings, to assess how we can augment our ability to allow for ventilation to remove viral particles from the air and decrease the risk of transmission. So all of these things we can take into consideration as we open schools at this time. The new guidance now looks at isolation and exposure guidance as opposed to isolation and quarantine. And you'll remember that isolation is the term that's used for what we expect someone who has COVID-19 to do. And so we're asking people to, and expecting people to separate themselves from others who are not sick when they test positive for COVID-19. If they have to come out of that separate room and separate bathroom area that they're using, they should wear a high quality mask at all times when they're around others who are not sick. Isolation is required for people with symptoms awaiting test results and for people that have a positive test. Isolation ends typically at 10 days. If, and day zero is considered to be the day that symptoms started or the day when you got that first positive COVID-19 test. They allow for people to come out of isolation at five days if their symptoms are improving and they are fever free without requiring any medication to reduce fever. And use a mask for the remaining five days of that timeframe. And they have now some indications that if a patient wants to try to remove their mask earlier, that they'd have to do so after they've done two antigen tests on day six, which would be counting from day one being that day after you develop symptoms, day one being the day after you receive that positive test result. So on day six and day eight, if you have a negative antigen test, then it would be possible to remove the mask. However, if those tests are not being performed, the mask should remain on in, when you're around others and especially if you're living with somebody who's at risk for severe disease from COVID-19, someone who has a chronic medical condition, someone who is older, someone who's immunocompromised, then that mask should be worn for a full 10 days after that first day of symptoms or first day that the test is positive. And those recommendations are based on the fact that this particular variant of COVID-19, the VA.5 and also VA.4 have been shown to be shown, showing up as positive antigen test after that fifth day. So the testing helps to ensure that people are not walking around infectious without masks. Exposure guidance, which is now the term that's replacing quarantine, is what we talk about when someone has had close contact with someone who's positive for COVID-19 for 15 minutes or more within that six foot distance. And it's something that's, applies now to all individuals regardless of their vaccination status. The recommendation is to use a high quality mask like an N95 or KN95 if available as soon as you learn that you've been exposed. And that's to continue for 10 days. And again, counting the 10 days after that last day of exposure. So the day, the last day that you were exposed would be your day zero and then it's 10 days after that. The recommendation is also to test on day six, so five days after you were exposed. And then if you test positive, you'd follow the isolation guidance. And if you test negative, you're still to continue to wear a mask around others in public and also avoid travel, particularly going on public transportation and avoid situations where you are not able to wear a mask continuously. So the way that this, this new guidance is being applied is both to general public and to schools. And as everybody in this group's aware, the recommendation is for those under the age of two years not to wear a mask. So the, they would fall under the category of having to isolate for a full 10 days if they're not able to wear a mask. But could, if they were to receive testing on day six and day eight, be able to return sooner, which may be something that some of the parents with younger children will want to do in order to get their children back into childcare. And an issue that's been on everybody's mind, front of mind is helping children cope as a result of these many years of responding to and being in the middle of COVID and now a new outbreak of another viral entity. So I just mentioned this in my presentation because prior to the end of school, we did a really brief survey to talk to some of the healthcare providers in our schools. And we'll probably do another more expansive look at that in conjunction with some of our mental health providers. Because we know that children impacted by trauma are exhibiting and manifesting the impact on their behavior and in different ways than adults do. So going forward, I know everybody's been mindful of that, particularly in our schools, but I wanted to bring this up again because I know this group is particularly concerned about that. And on the CDC website, they have a listing of mental health providers and resources that are available on a national level. And this, as well as what we know are available here locally, are things that I just want to bring to the attention of those who are watching. And as you requested, I'm also bringing to the attention of the group the new virus that we have circulating globally. It's now causing 38,019 cases worldwide. It's been reported in 93 locations. And, and we have it here in the United States and we have it here in Texas. The global impact is significant. In Texas, we have 1,078 cases as of August 17th. And in Travis County, as of August 17th, we have 93 confirmed cases of monkeypox slash non-veryola orthopox cases. And 491 persons who are being monitored because they've had close contact with one of these confirmed cases. Thus far, the distribution of cases is predominantly in our white population and non-Hispanic whites represent 37.2% of those impacted and 27.9% of the white individuals who are affected by this are reported as Hispanic. We have 93, I'm sorry, 29% of individuals who do not report their race to us or list themselves as unknown and 4.7 that lists themselves as or identifies as other. So there, there are several people that may have just opted not to report their identified race. We've looked at, we're looking at this not so much to show any kind of discrimination of any sort, but to just show the impact and monitor for disparities and impact as we go through this particular outbreak. So what is monkeypox? It is a viral entity. It's been around for a long time. We've actually had it in this country before. We've had an outbreak in 2003 that was quickly resolved using mitigation strategies. And we do have a virus, a vaccine that we can use to prevent the developing, prevent people from developing the symptoms of monkeypox. The newest one being Jennia's. It's a two dose vaccine series. Initially, it was, as I said, for smallpox and it did receive authorization to be used for monkeypox as an emergency use. And it has been helpful and effective in doing so. The symptoms of monkeypox are fever, headache, muscle aches and backache, swollen lymph nodes, chills, exhaustion and a rash that looks like pimples or blisters that can come up on the face, inside the mouth, on the hands or soles of feet. And also in chest genital area and the anal area. These symptoms, the prodromal symptoms, as we call them, all of those constitutional symptoms of fever, headache, achiness, chills, exhaustion may start before the rash does or may not. The rash may start before those symptoms do. In any case, those, either the prodromal symptoms of fever, headache, muscle aches, swollen lymph nodes, et cetera, or the rash developing either one of those things happening is the time that marks when a person becomes infectious. And they remain infectious until the rash has completely resolved. That is, the scabs fall off and there's been a clean, fresh layer of skin on the person involved. Typically, that, that rash lasts anywhere from two to four weeks. And there can be, depending on where the rash develops, particularly if it develops in the mouth or in a very sensitive area of your body, like the genital area. That's, can cause a lot of pain and typically gets people out to look for medical help. Most of the time, this rash and the symptoms of this rash are self limited, but it can cause people enough disability or they might get an infection of something in addition, of a bacterial infection in addition to the monkeypox infection in certain cases where their resistance or their immune system is not as good as it should be. So in someone who's a cancer patient or has some sort of immunocompromised condition, then they may be more at risk for having some other things developed that would cause them to need more medical care and even hospitalization. Thus far, we've only had one person who required an overnight stay for initiation of antibiotics for secondary skin infection and then pain control. But it can cause some other complicating illness. So it's important that we stop the spread of this, which is what we've been doing in our provider community thus far. It's important to note that anybody can get this virus. It's not confined to any one group. And so everybody needs to be aware that if they get a rash and a fever or just the rash, that they should seek medical attention and stay home until they've been evaluated to ensure that they don't have monkeypox. And if they do have monkeypox, that they stay home until they have fully recovered. And how does it spread? It spreads by direct skin to skin contact with the rash, the scabs and the body fluids of the person with monkeypox. Touching surfaces, towels, clothing, bedding, that someone who has had monkeypox can transmit that to the person touching it that doesn't have monkeypox. So it's important that you wear gloves, don't shake the clothing. Put it in a, preferably a cloth bag that you can throw in with the washer with just normal washing cycle, soap and water. And, and then thereby avoid having the fluid or the scabs on your skin or any, or entering, having any of those things enter any cuts or abrasions that you may have in your body or that you may breathe in. Contact with respiratory secretions. So the spray that can come out of your mouth is, is also something that can pass this virus from one person to another. And it usually requires prolonged face to face contact in order for this to happen. So it is recommended that someone in particular who's caring for somebody who has monkeypox wear a mask when they go into the room to assist them, as well as wear gloves and eye protection. And then intimate contact is also a route for transmission. So those individuals who are, have an intimate contact, a sexual contact can pass this virus from between themselves. We, here at APH, have an incredible team of epidemiologists who are, been working around the clock since our first case was reported to us. since our first case was reported to us on June 23, in evaluating the monkeypox cases, getting in touch with these people that have contracted the disease, identifying who the close contacts are. And then helping people who are needing assistance for, be it just finding a medical home or identifying those that need vaccinations, et cetera. We have a survey online on our APH website now for people to take to see if they're eligible for vaccine. And we have a chronicling of those folks that are identifying as, that themselves is needing vaccine. And we'll take that information. And as vaccine becomes more available, we'll reach out to people to schedule them for a vaccine appointment. There's, vaccine right now is a scarce resource, but we are constantly asking for more resources. So as we get those, we are making that available, not only through APH, but particularly we've forged partnerships with many of our providers in our area who are willing to provide treatment and vaccinations to their patients. And we'll continue to work on expanding those relationships as time goes by. With that, I thank you for your time. And I'd be willing to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Wachs. Board colleagues, any questions for Dr. Wachs of the administration? Trustee Lugo?
So, Dr. Wachs, thank you for the presentation. My question is, for the administration, what kind of information has been provided to campuses, especially, you know, where some families might have concerns because of immunocompromised conditions or just concerns in general, whether it's COVID or monkeypox or any other virus that assails us?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that question. We have a schools team that's in regular communication with all of our ISDs. And we put out a guidance for COVID in particular earlier in August. And we just revamped that and sent that out to the respective ISDs. So we are in constant communication with them to talk about how to implement mitigation strategies. The interesting thing is that this virus, this new virus, monkeypox and COVID, share some of the same mitigation strategies. So hand washing, staying home when you're sick, washing surfaces. And are things that we've been doing for COVID. And anticipate that it's part of the normal practice of getting through the day in a school system now. So we'll continue to work with them on that.
We were also very, excuse me, fortunate to work with APH. And we actually have a monkeypox vaccination clinic at Metz. It does meet some requirements in order to be vaccinated there, but we're happy to partner with them. All of our principals, assistant principals and nurses received a monkeypox packet, as well as an updated COVID vaccine information packet and then COVID protocol. So all of that's been updated. Dr. Wachs has been an amazing partner with us. We talk sometimes daily, sometimes weekly. But we do have a trained epidemiologist on staff. So we're extremely fortunate at AISD to have biosurveillance, catch these things early and report to APH.
For the folks watching at home, biosurveillance, can you give a quick little?
Yes, it's just really watching some of the indicators from nurses. Let's say students have diarrhea, vomiting, nausea, they report it to us. We report those situations to APH. If we have 10% of our population call in, we're on it immediately, finding out the symptom, you know, symptomatology of that, reporting it out to APH. They've been a great partner in catching these things early in the past.
I really appreciate that. Oh, and one other thing, just wanted to give kudos to you all. Because last year, last school year, this calendar year, there was an incident where I think a campus or maybe it was just a classroom had a stomach virus. And so, you know, a lot of times, you know, parents rightly so, right? We're worried, we don't know what's going to happen. But that, for me, you know, at least for me, it really meant a lot that, you know, y'all were able to catch it, kind of find a pattern. And if there's anything you want to add about that level of attention that you give?
No, I appreciate that. And that darn norovirus, you know, kind of snuck up on us. But we're very fortunate. And that's because I have a great team and great support from Dr. May. So that's how we're able to work with administration and public health, just be the liaison. So I appreciate parents like you and, you know, letting us know what works and what doesn't.
Thank you.
I did want to say thank you for recognizing that. Because like you said, we, this isn't the first rodeo, as they say. And the team does a great job of, like you say, zoning in and responding rapidly. And like she said, it's not just her. It's a pretty, pretty wide team that responds to these incidents. So thank you.
Would you mind introducing yourself as well? Sorry about that. I just want to make sure you get the right recognition.
I jumped right in. My name's Elena Bejarano. I'm the Director of Health Services.
Thank you. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Boswell?
I just have one. Thank you, Dr. Wachs, for being here and Ms. Bejarano also. I just want to level set just for us as an organization and for our community that we're here talking about monkeypox. I just want to understand, are we talking about it because we want to be aware and pay attention? Or is there a reason to, you know, should people be freaking out? And my understanding is we're aware, we want to be aware and on top of it so people don't have to freak out. And I just would like, kind of, where you fall on that spectrum so we know where to put ourselves on that spectrum. Thank you.
If that question was for me, this is a situational awareness briefing. Right now, we do not have any pediatric cases. No children have been reported as having monkeypox. But we've had a lot of questions from parents. And I know that our team members at AISD have as well. So I wanted to take this opportunity to give the public the information so that they know what they can do to protect themselves and know that AISD and other ISDs are preparing and vigilant about monkeypox as well as COVID.
Thank you for that, Dr. Wachs. I really appreciate that framing, just so people know kind of where to put this in their list of worries. And really encouraged to know that you guys are all taking care of us so that we can put it pretty far down our list of worries in an appropriate place. So thank you very much for that. And I appreciate all the work that's being done to really take care of our community and make sure that we're on top of it. Thank you both.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions? If not, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. Members, will we move on to item five, the student achievement? This item is a part of our commitment to discuss student achievement. And tonight, we'll discuss third grade reading and math, end-of-year MAP scores. This is the first discussion we have, we have that not only has all of the beginning, middle and end-of-the-year update, but also now has the scorecard goal for STAR results. So, Dr. Mayes, could you provide our update?
Sure. Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Tonight's discussion on student achievement is over reading and math for third grade. As shared, tonight is our first opportunity to present a full year of data, including STAR results under our commitment to board monitoring. As a reminder, tonight's goal is also aligned with our commitments from House Bill III to set and discuss goals for third-grade literacy and numeracy. Chief, well, Elizabeth Casas, our chief of schools and academics at this point, along with Mr. Hicks, our associate superintendent of elementary schools, and Heather Petrazini, director of academics, will lead us through tonight's monitoring report. I think to the board, this is a tool. Our MAP assessment is a tool that we've learned from this past year. So we definitely will be making some tweaks to make sure that it's a useful tool for us as we use it to help us support growth in all of our students. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the team.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we are talking about Goal Two, which is third-grade reading for economically disadvantaged students that are meeting, are on the MEATs level on STAR, the state assessment, and the Goal Progress Measure for African-American and Hispanic students on end-of-the-year MAP. And Goal Three is third-grade math scores on the state assessment on grade level or above. And the Goal Progress Measure is using our MAP end-of-the-year data. So we have a team, Dr. Diaz, Heather Petrazini and Mr. Hicks here, that are going to present the information.
Good evening. I'm going to start us off. On this, on the second page, you're going to see a really nice summary of where we are at this point in the data. In September, you will be receiving the final scorecard for the year. But we do have STAR data, some preliminary STAR data to share with you. So as you recall, you all have Goal Two and Goal Three set for STAR. So the end of the year scorecard goal is based on STAR. And then we used MAP as a progress measure throughout the year. So specifically, the ones we are monitoring today are 2.1, which is African-American students who are experiencing poverty and how they scored on reading MAP. And if you go across, you'll see that is the one red square in this, on this page. Because the target was set for 18% and we achieved a 15%. I'll go into more detail on that in a page or so. Then the second one was on Hispanic students experiencing poverty. The goal was set for 17% and we achieved an 18%. For 3.1, this is African-American students experiencing poverty in math. And the goal was 8% and we achieved a 12%. And then finally, 3.2 is Hispanic students experiencing poverty on math MAP. And the goal was set for 11% and we exceeded it and ended with a 22%. And I'd also like to draw your attention, since we do have the STAR data. So Goal Two, the goal was set for 25%. And this was economically disadvantaged students as a whole. And we achieved a 33%. And then for Goal Three, the goal was 18% and we achieved at a 25%. Dr. Rech, next page, please. So again, you're familiar with this chart, but now we have added in the 21, 22 data. And you see that we are still behind the state, but we are also in an upward trajectory. So we are rebounding, but we are not where we want to be. Okay, Dr. Rech? Thank you. So this is a closer look at on-grade level reading. And we have highlighted African-American students and Hispanic students in kind of a tanish color or yellow, just to draw your attention to it. You can see at the beginning of the year, in regards to reading on level, African-Americans started at 16%. Then you track it to the middle of the year, 19%. And then we finish the year at 15%, even though the target was 18%. Hispanic students, we started out 16%. You track it to ECODIS, it's 17%. And then we finished the year at 18%, which, and our goal was 17%. Part of what we see in the reading data was, again, like we talked to you about last month, was that we gave the MAP test after STAR and there was a bit of fatigue. And a lot, we did hear from students and parents about them not understanding the purpose of taking MAP test after they had just finished taking STAR. And reading requires a little bit more stamina. You'll see that the kids did better on math when we go to the next page. So at the top, we have the growth there for you to monitor. And again, you'll see that they were doing pretty well. And then when it came to the end of the year, they kind of dropped off there. Again, we attribute that to fatigue in regards to reading. But when we go down to the bottom to look at math, and this is the goals that we're measuring, we started out at 4% with the African-Americans. In the middle of the year, we were at 11%. And then at the end of the year, we were at 12%. Again, our goal was 8%. So that was four points higher than the goal. Our Hispanic students experiencing poverty started out at 6%. In the middle of the year, they were 15%. At the end of the year, they were 22%. And the goal was 11%. So that is an 11% increase. So we have some slides to show you to get into the data a little bit further.
So as Dr. Rech pulls up the slides, next slide, please. Dr. Diaz and I were interested in, NWA puts out together a linking study that shares a correlation between how students are doing on STAR, or how they're doing on their MAP assessment and how they'll do on STAR. So we were sort of curious, how true was this to the outcomes we had for students? So we started to line up all of the assessments. So this is third-grade MAP reading on grade level, as well as third-grade STAR reading at MEATs. So these are supposed to correlate. And you'll see, for each student group, it's not horribly off. Although when we get more into the ECODIS, students experiencing poverty, emergent bilingual and sped, there is a larger gap. Again, we attribute that to the fatigue of having taken STAR and then literally within days saying to students, and here is a MAP assessment so that we can complete that as well. And we heard a lot of feedback from community and from teachers and from students that that was overwhelming. Next slide, please. However, when we got to math, it was particularly spot-on. The outcomes matched what MAP predicted would happen. And so an adjustment we're making moving forward is we have moved MAP to the final two weeks of March. So it is quite far away from STAR. And we're going to be able to use that data in a final push in order to, what is it telling us right now? What gaps can we close and how can we target? We'll be doing the same thing for reading as well.
Yeah, that was one of the things I'm going to jump in a little bit, that we did realize that the Goal Progress Measure should predict our outcomes. But the timing that we took it this last year was after STAR. So the data really was kind of an after the fact versus this next year. We've aligned it so that it comes earlier in the semester so that the data can be used to predict the STAR. And so you can see the alignment very close with math, which is a good, since last year was our first year and there was a lot of, what is it really going to tell us? You know, how valid is the data? The data's pretty valid. The other thing that's interesting is the math test was taken first and the reading was second. And we are hearing some feedback that there were some campuses that as soon as students finished the STAR test, they gave them the MAP test on the same day. So it was a learning experience for us. So we are making some adjustments to make sure. But I think the data is pretty reflective that this is a really good Goal Progress Measure of predicting outcomes on the state assessment. And it's not about testing to the test, teaching to the test or over-testing. It's about how well are our students progressing and the standards that they're learning for grade level.
I do want to pause right there because I heard the gasp. And to be responsive. So that's part of the learning that we're talking about, right? Again, we don't want to over-test students, especially when we don't have value or we haven't positioned it well to get the value out of it. And so that's part of the adjustment that the team is making this year is positioning the assessment so that we can get maximum value out of it. And you're not over-testing or exhausting students. Sorry about that.
So another piece that we looked at was participation in reading academies and what impact that may have had on student learning outcomes. If you'll recall, K through third-grade teachers were taking reading academies last year. So we went through and looked by individual schools. And we found that 86% of schools that took the reading academies last year, so they were by schools, whole campuses, 86% showed growth compared on STAR. And we, the way we determined that was either a letter grade or a five-point gain in any one domain. So some real measure of growth compared to campuses that did not have the reading academies last year, where we only saw that same pattern in 47% of schools. So the reason we kind of wanted to look at that is science of reading, it's not just about... about, here's how you teach reading. It's about how do words work, orthography, kind of thinking about the spelling, morphology, where do words come from, and best practices in literacy education. Something that we're looking forward to this year for this next cohort of teachers is TEA did revise the reading academy modules so that it would be 60 hours of seat time as opposed to the out hundred that we heard last year, it was taking teachers to get through that. So I do feel, we do feel like, you know, we're in a better position this year, and hopefully that'll be a better experience for learners. And there are additional options now for the reading academies, so teachers can test out, they can take a proficiency exam, and then they take sort of a truncated course. So it's not the full 60 hours. So that's another additional option that's available right now. Next slide, please.
Another supportive initiative that we put into place this year is a reorganized structure for our schools. You'll see that the service team model that we have in place has us divided into three learning communities across the district. And within each learning community, I'm in charge of the elementary schools and Dr. Stout is in charge of the secondary schools, but within each of the three learning communities, we have high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, there are feeder schools aligned with them, and then one secondary ED and two elementary EDs within each learning community. The value in this particular model is that we can provide concentrated support for the schools. They have like needs within those particular learning communities, and then we differentiate the support accordingly. So you'll see that in the, I don't know what color it is, orange, peach colors in the middle there, that there are special education, academic coaching specialists, multilingual, and so forth, support teams that are put into place for each one of the learning communities.
And finally, this is a slide that we showed you again because when we brought to you the six through eight data, these adjustments that we made are basically pre-K, 12 adjustments when we learn from the data. So again, we would like to have the curriculum audited by Region 13. We made revisions to the curriculum. We're working on an equity reflection tool. We've added more reading and writing across the content areas into the curriculum. We really honed in on tier-one instruction. All principals and APs during the Leadership Institute were trained on what tier-one instruction should look like. As well, they were trained on professional learning communities. So that was huge to have every principal and AP in the district go through this training. Again, as Heather mentioned, we've got the reading academies that are really showing growth, and the way our specialists are supporting the Office of School Leadership in the campuses, I think is, it's going to be a tremendous asset. And the biggest thing was really the lesson we learned was having to move the test, the MAP test before STAR, so that way we can use that data to adjust instruction just in time and not it be an afterthought. And then Heather, from her role just stepping out of a principal, would like to add something.
So, here I am. And so one thing that we noticed in the spring is our scorecards were sent to us and it ties directly to your principal evaluation. It's about 15, 10% of your overall evaluation. Well, then when you start to drill down to that and you think, okay, how am I going to make this work? These goal progress measures are measured beginning MOE and end of year. So that's another piece of data that you're collecting along the year where you can say, okay, what adjustments and what supports do I need to offer my campus? What professional learning? What do I need to look for when I walk into classrooms? So you're getting that immediate feedback that's also tied into the scorecard. And then a secondary piece that we're also excited about is, we hear a lot about the student learning objective, which is part of the teacher evaluation, but now teachers can use MAP as part of that. So you can use MAP to, you can say your whole class, you can say a specific student group, and that's 15% of the teacher evaluation. So this alleviates the need to have that extra test at the end of the year where kids are saying, I took this test at the beginning of the year and now I'm taking it again at the end of the year. It's something that we're already doing. So in this way, the scorecard and these two evaluation tools, everything's sort of rowing in the same direction, and yet we have this MOE data in the middle where we can be responsive to what's happening on our campuses in real time and get outcomes that attribute to the overall success as well. I think that's it. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, trustees. Now is the time for us to ask questions on the current vision. So our goal tonight is monitoring and ensuring our reality matches the vision presented. So when asking questions, we should try to focus on the data presented, asking questions about who, what, why, and how. So trustees, are there any questions?
Thank you for this presentation. Couple of questions. The first one is, how are we supporting students who are not at the meets level? So I know there's, you know, you have where the teacher pulls them out, but if it's just a teacher and say, it's six students at a table, and all six students need that individualized attention, how are you providing that?
That is a great question, and that is part of why we focused on tier-one instruction, and it is one of the reasons why the MTSS process is going to be so valuable. So what happens in the MTSS process? If a couple of kids, like you said, are not making it to the meets or master's level, then you can pull them in a small group or during a home, a homeroom, like when a high school or a middle school will run a pep rally schedule, and there's these extra times built into the day, that's when those kids are getting the extra support that they need. And then if that doesn't work, then it goes into tier three, and tier three is an extra support class that those kids can be in. So the MTSS process is meant to catch those kids before they fall behind. So it's a three-tiered approach to ensuring that we're not, the kids aren't falling between the cracks.
I would add that part of the big training that we did over the summer is on the tier-one instruction and really understanding, when teachers are designing lessons, that they're clear about what's the learning goal, and then what is the success criteria at the end, and that we're building in the checks for understanding. So we're not waiting for an assessment before we're making any adjustments to the instruction. And the training, tying it to the PLCs so that they're really effective, that time is really critical. We've made a big investment to give especially the elementary teachers and our secondary teachers the extra time. The planning time has to be used so that the lessons are really planned, thinking about all of their students, and how do our students who receive special education, our students who are second language learners, or students who are struggling, how do they access grade-level curriculum? And that they're really planning for, what's the goal? How are we knowing if kids learned it? And what are we doing in between to check to make sure kids are where they need to be? And then what do we do through the MTSS process for those students who aren't, through small group instruction or additional supports, either during the day or outside of the day?
So I kind of think we're talking about two different things. So the student I'm talking about is a student who, just say, for example, third grade student may not be reading on grade level. So I get the pullout, but if I'm a student that really needs that one-on-one attention, there's only so many hours in a day. So how do you support that student or those students?
So trustee Anderson, thank you again for the question. It's about differentiated instruction and making sure that we know where every, that the teacher knows where every single one of the children are at any particular point in time. So the child that you're talking about is right here, and your goal is for them to get right here, and what is it that you're going to do instructionally between here and here to get them there? And it's going to be different for every single child. And so we aren't going to be able to do a whole group approach and say that one size fits all. And so the teacher then is going to have to basically create a plan for each one of their students in order to ensure that they get there. Then it's the responsibility of the instructional leader on campus to ensure that there's someone that can provide the additional assistance, whether it be the MTSSs, the intervention specialists, regrouping with another teacher next door, whether it be the principal, the assistant principal, whoever, but the additional help that comes in. We have academic learning specialists here in the district as well that can go and help them figure out ways that they can do that better. And then that goes back to our learning community structure as well when we're providing that additional support for those learning communities where they might have a higher concentration of kids that need, and teachers that need that kind of support. But it's about differentiated instruction and making sure that we don't try to make a one-size-fits-all approach.
The learning communities, I've heard a lot about that, and I've been waiting to see the response to my question because I have some concerns about that, if it is as I believe it to be. But I'm going to wait on the response to my question. My second question has to do with math. I remember a long time ago, I ain't going, I'm not going to date myself, but when Mr. Patterson was my teacher, he would have us come up to the desk and we would have to, you know, go over the multiplication table, you know, see if we know our fives, tens, all of that. So how are we ensuring that students know their multiplication, know division, know long division? I haven't seen that for some time. So how are we ensuring at the, you know, at the very basic level, you know your multiplication table?
Well, we don't do rote memorization anymore and just, you know, the old, the trials that we used to do where you would go to the front of the room and you would go to the back of the line if you didn't get it right and those kinds of things. So no, we don't do that. But the concrete abstract is what really works in that they do, there are a lot of activities that you can do to help you learn the concept of multiplication, the concept of division, addition, and subtraction, and then you're able to use that and apply it in word problems, for lack of a better word. That's what we used to call them back in the old days. And that really does begin to take hold as kids become institutionalized with that over time.
But is it still using those different methods? I remember when, when my baby was younger, it was like the different methods and it just, it was really, I didn't even understand it myself. Is it still the same type of methods where you have the different boxes and it shows you how to get to? I mean, it's, I don't even know what it's called because it was...
There are a number of different strategies that you can utilize, but even in the standards, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, it'll tell you that you have to eventually, you have to be able to multiply, you know, two-digit by two-digit by a certain grade level, three-digit by three-digit by a certain grade level. So there is place for algorithms in the standards, but it's not the way that we just teach it where you just go to the board and you just do that all day long. It's about learning it from a concrete method and then going to the abstract, and eventually you'll be able to do that as well because you'll understand how and why you're doing it. So that, what, like, it sounds like you're describing arrays, for example, where you would draw the boxes and you would figure out how to do the tens and the, you know, grouping by tens, grouping by hundreds, and doing it in that way. And that would be an example of a concrete way that you would do that and then be able to understand the concept of multiplication, then be able to do the algorithm.
And how are we ensuring that I, as a parent, when that work is sent home, that I can support my child?
Well, I think we're going to continue to try to get better at doing that and making sure that that can happen. There are a number of different ways that parents can become involved. It is our responsibility as educators to ensure that we provide that opportunity for you to do that, but parent coffees are one way. The principals oftentimes will have a little piece of the time when they do that. The family learning nights are a big one as well, when you can come and learn how to do it. The weekly newsletters that teachers may send home, our parents, our principals may send home. So there are a number of different ways that we already utilize, and we'll just continue to think of different ways to get that information out still.
Examples, examples, and examples.
And we will provide examples for you, trustee Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Anderson. Trustee Ashi?
Trustee Anderson, as a parent who said goodbye and good luck to my children a long time ago where math is concerned, because it is definitely taught differently now than it was when I was in school. Oh, I feel a lot older. I have a quick question to ask about, first of all, I would love to, I do want to acknowledge that I love the green boxes. That's super exciting to see the green boxes and to see the progress that we're making. However, I will ask, of course, looking at that, looking at goal two, overall goal two, even different than the growth progress measures, I can see that we've actually already met our goal for the 2022-23 school year. And so I guess my question for all of you, Ms. Costas, for our superintendent, is will we anticipate seeing changes in the, in the goals as a result of these wonderful results? Does that make sense? Like, will we see, will we keep the target at 31%? Or do you anticipate that we may move that target since we've already met it?
So I think there was some conversation about potentially adjusting goals as we found ourselves being successful. Now, we didn't want to be overly aggressive because I do believe Dr. Reich warned us against that, but I think that we did say that we would make room as a team for making adjustments where we need to. I think everybody feels pretty confident about how we are going to use the MAP tools and the planning and all of the training that has been put in place. And like, what I like to say is I think that teachers, principals, assistant principals have developed some muscle memory from last year, even though it hurt a little bit. And I think that, you know, we can make the, we can talk about making adjustments as we need to.
And I think, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking of how do we stretch ourselves as a district? How do we, how do we not necessarily put us, like, I think we have an opportunity for even more growth, which is super exciting. Of course, would love to have seen all of the boxes green, and would also like to talk a little bit, the PowerPoint that you guys put up that showed the MAP as compared to the STAR. I was wondering if you could go back to the reading one, because I had a question that I wanted to ask, because that's the first time I've seen that one. That one, I don't believe was, the presentation, I don't think was on Board Docs, correct? Okay, so if we could put that one up there, I have a question about that one. I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Because the MAP data is in the blue boxes, and the STAR data is in the red, reddish-brown boxes. And it, and you, what we were particularly noticing was that our economically disadvantaged, it's tiny print on my tiny screen, economically disadvantaged, that emergent bilingual and sped, that the bars were farther apart. I will say, I'm glad to see that, that actually the MAP maybe was a little more challenging. I would have actually been more concerned if those blue bars were above where the STAR tests were. But if I heard you correctly, you, one of your investigations and thoughts is the fatigue from the testing. And it sounds like you were saying that those three segments of students were impacted more by the fatigue. And I was wondering if you might have any insights as to why, because the bars for our African-American, Hispanic, and white populations were closer. And so checking for clarity that I heard you correctly, and then wondering if you could provide insights into that.
Thank you. That's a great question, and it's definitely something that Dr. Diaz and I, when we were sort of farming out this data, we're getting excited about, we felt like, okay, we're actually seeing something here that we can work with and use. When you are a reader who is perhaps struggling or facing all sorts of challenges, and unfortunately, yes, it is true, and we will, we will say it and own it, there was a testing crunch at the end of last year, and people very publicly talked about it. But if I just took one long, two-hour, three-hour, four-hour test, and then even a day later, another test, even the, for all students, not even just any student group, is, why am I doing this? I just finished our, school ends on Thursday or Friday, just want to get out of here. And I think that would be for all student groups, but then especially when we look at our different groups, if that, you gave it all that you had on your STAR reading, maybe on MAP, I was a little tired and I just want to go on with the summer, and we knew there was fatigue.
Yeah, and I think that's the big point, is when you have students that are struggling and that are further behind, and so the complexity of the text, and remember that MAP is national, it's at a national level, so the level of complexity of the text is where it should be. It's challenging. So students who are already exhausted from having to read a passage and answer multiple questions, which is so different than math, because math is you answer, you tackle one problem at a time, versus reading, you read a passage and then you may have to answer six to eight questions. You have to remember and go back, and it's not just a, let me solve this, it's let me go back and find it. And a lot of times, the answers are not in the text, you have to infer, you have to draw conclusions, you have to really be able to interpret the readings to be able to answer the text. So it's, it's a much more complex to answer... So it's, it's a much more complex to answer reading questions than it is solving problems. And so when we know that when students are struggling and are further behind, they're more likely to give up, especially when everybody is talking about STAR and then now you have this test afterwards and school is out tomorrow.
Right. It was funny because the kids did tell us that. They used the Let's Talk. And it was hilarious to read their, read their responses as they were advocating for themselves.
Yeah, I think the other part of it is the value for instructors, principals, like, now we're at a place where we have this data and we can see how closely aligned those results were. So now, you know, again, when we talk about teachers being able to use it for SLOs, because again, that was another assessment that teachers were having to shut down and administer to gather data for. So now there's some, you know, some alignment there and more value there. So I think that, you know, again, for instructors and administrators, it'll be a little different this go round.
Thank you for that. And so it does sound like probably the biggest indicator or challenge that you have identified was the testing calendar. Were there other things that you identified that maybe you are going to be looking at or encouraging our campuses to look at as maybe correlations or something that you saw? And I give the example of attendance because that's just one that I think is one that always jumps into my head, but were there any other things that you guys are still examining or trying to kind of draw data out?
Yeah, I can start and then Dr. Diaz, you can add anything. I think the other thing too is the transition to the technology platform. There were still a lot of schools that wanted to do paper pencil and so, and you saw that with the test results, so we had to wait because a lot of schools had done it paper. And so MAP, there is no paper pencil test, it's all online. And so when you think about with reading, the annotation, the being able to go back, being able to highlight and maneuver it. So we do need to expose our third graders to be able to play, or not play, but have more familiarity to using the text features within the platform so that they can highlight or they can underline or they can circle, so that when they do test, take the assessments on a technology platform, that they're more used to it. So I think that was another one that maybe some of the students weren't as prepared or felt as competent to be able to maneuver the technology. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
And I'd like to add again that this was really our first year of implementation. So there's always, there's always struggles with the technology and understanding the purpose of the assessment, but I think once we communicate what we discovered and what we have shown you all here tonight, then we'll generate more buy-in and people will see the usefulness, especially switching that testing window to be before STAR, so it's actually usable data. But MAP, it's a beast, it's a large thing to implement. So I think as we just become more familiar with it and we understand how valid and reliable these results were, that it'll start taking hold better.
Wonderful, that's exciting to hear. I was gonna say, then the last is not actually a question, but more of a request. And it has to do with the additional materials that you guys are kind enough to supply to us that are campus-specific. And whilst I love a good percentage, because I do, I also struggle because not all of our schools are the same size. And so sometimes the percentages can be, can kind of throw off what I'm looking at when I'm, I'm in, still trustee sings when we're trying to find the outliers, the people that, you know, and it's, I don't know if there's an answer to that, but if there's some way to reflect in the data, just the size of the school as it compares, because I do think that that can make a difference. Or I know this one would be harder, but the, even the number of economically disadvantaged students and non-economically disadvantaged students, again, because within the percentages, there is, unless you're comparing exact number school to exact number school, sometimes those can, those can throw off those numbers. I don't know if that's solvable because I do understand that we want to protect our students and we don't want to put any identifying numbers out there, but if there is a way to do that, I certainly would find that helpful.
Yeah, I think we can look at it similar to on the tables where we have the in underneath it. We'll talk to our accountability department to see.
If that's possible, and it may not be, but it certainly would help me in, when I'm, when I'm crunching the numbers, which is not my strong point, but I try really hard. So thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you and for any teacher that is listening, thank you. This is a 100%, a reflection of your work, your time with your students, your blood, sweat and tears during COVID, your blood, sweat and tears for each family and each student. And I appreciate you and I am grateful for every moment that you spent away from your loved friends, loved ones, from your hobby, from your time to relax. It was a giving year, is what I call that. As when I was a teacher, we always used to talk about refilling our own apple basket because if you don't fill your apple basket, you don't have an apple to give. Well, I can tell you right now, every single teacher in our district, they were without apples. They gave every bit of their body and soul to our kids last year. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Trustee Ashi. Trustees, other questions? Anyone else? Trustee Lugo?
How do you follow that up? That was great. So a couple of quest, a couple of questions. Let's see. So what kinds of thoughts have you all discussed internally or maybe that you're gathering from campuses around what can be done to kind of catch kids in that K through late second grade? Just as a parent of younger kids, you know, especially with my first one, we were, this wasn't just at AISD, it was also at the preschool that he went to. We were kind of told, oh, give it time, give it time. Now thankfully, things worked out for him and his brother also eventually needed some interventions. And so I feel really lucky that that happened, but I think it's also because of self-advocacy. And I think of all the families and parents, especially kiddos that are raised by abuelas or, you know, grandmas and grandpas. What are some initial thoughts or maybe things that y'all already have in the works?
So all Kinder and first grade students are screened and that's from the Texas Education Agency. We are screening everyone early, but I think another great tool is we, in, within MAP, can even see charts where showing us a steady growth, steady progress. And then we can also pull the charts and see, wow, like, you haven't moved perhaps as fast as we thought you would. Is this a time thing? Do I give you time? Or do I need to look at this data and say, how am I not reaching you and is there something else going on here? And really making sure that the tier one is strong. We want to make sure the best first teach. And the data can tell us, are you moving at a rate that we feel is appropriate for where you're at? So I think, you know, there's a lot of tools built in anymore that can give us that and also give us individualized learning paths when students are with us, but also perhaps they're in a center and you want to put them on iXL. It's not going to put them in a place that's way beyond where they, beyond that zone of proximal development. We want to find that sweet spot where it's a stretch goal, like you said earlier, and then as well as supportive.
Yeah. And then kind of along those lines, the first thing that came to mind as I was hearing, you know, probably the teachers, right, that are looking at that data, trying to dissect and figure out for each of the students that they have. And I'm doing pickup and the other day, and I know it's just the fourth day of school, but I was doing pickup and God bless, one of the teachers, poor thing, she had a younger grade level that she was managing. And I heard her tell the kiddos, she was like, okay, we, stay close, you know, this is going to be overwhelming, because it is, right? After school, everybody's hoarding around. So she said, it's going to be overwhelming and I'm already overwhelmed. And I was like, poor, I wanted to give her a hug. I was like, I feel you. So, so anyway, so I kind of connect those two and I, and I think about what Ms. Stevens said earlier about leveling. Leveling's coming, right? So is winter, right? And so, thank you, Trustee Ashi. So, you know, leveling's coming, you know, we're looking at this data, you know, we kind of know what happened last year with leveling in terms of where staff end up having to be shifted to. And so is the administration able to kind of share, again, any initial thoughts or maybe things that are already in the works to balance out the approach to staff leveling with, you know, some schools need more people, more staff, in order to do that level of like really looking at data, really getting in there, helping students with the supports that they need and certainly lower income students, emerging bilingual students, students receiving special education, you know, those are all the students where we see that the growth is, is not at the same pace that we would like for it to be. And so I just wanted to see what, what your thoughts are or what the administration's thoughts are about managing leveling, managing resources and not letting one negatively impact the other.
So I think Ms. Stevens would talk about waiting and how we go about staffing campuses based on all of the student groups. She's saying yes, so I think that we're okay. I think the other piece of that is the learning community pieces that, you know, Mr. Hicks just talked about and us adding more resources in those areas of need. And then that, that isn't even counting resources that campuses can also purchase in the way of additional tutoring or additional support. Part of what I've been doing in terms of working with API or any of the additional groups that we have is trying to make sure that we're all looking at the data too and identifying areas where we need that additional support and being strategic about where we align that support. So like you said, we're all rowing in the same direction. So leveling unfortunately is something that we have to go through and I know you all are going to get some of that news in a minute from Ms. Stevens, but we're definitely always looking at pairing those resources with the areas of need.
Great. So I think what I heard was, you know, using the weighted approach to staffing. So if folks don't remember, you know, looking at the different student groups and then there's different weights or different, what would you call, what's another easier word? Different priorities, I guess, that are different numbers that are, that are given to each student group. So a student receiving special education services might have a quote-unquote higher number than a non-economically disadvantaged. Right, yeah, yeah. The other thing I heard was partnerships, community partnerships, district-wide partnerships. That's, I very much appreciate that. I hope that's something that, you know, this school year we really lean into. Austin is an amazing city. I've, I've learned so much from trustee Boswell about all the partnerships and I'm just barely scratching the surface, kind of trying to figure out how, how vast our community partners are and diverse. But the other thing, so there's a shameless little plug because sometimes the Austin Chamber of Commerce likes to come and provide comments and so hopefully they can also really see the connection between early education, supports to elementary students, supports to families, strengthening partnerships between the community and the schools with longer-term economic mobility, longer-term workforce outcomes for the city. So anyways, that's a small plug. The other thing I wanted to ask is, give me a second, let me, I typed it up. Okay. All right. So I was looking at the information that y'all presented and I'm wondering for the students that are classified as emergent bilingual, how were the, how was the reading scored? Is that just in English? Is it English and Spanish? How, help me understand what was measured there?
Yeah, I, I think it's a combined score. I'm not 100% sure. We'll have to go back and look at that. Yeah. Okay. All right.
So I think we probably need to sit now, we probably need to touch base with you to try to make sure we're looking, we're all looking at the same thing so we can make sure we're responding to that accurately.
It's English and Spanish combined.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lou. Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Boswell?
Thank you and thank you all for this information. I really appreciate it and I appreciate that we have a lot to celebrate and I appreciate you guys being really honest and transparent with us about places where we still have a lot of work to be done and, and it's exciting to see the green and it's really hard to see some of those green, you know, at 12 points that, you know, that, that we have a big hill to climb with a lot of our students and I appreciate the work that's being done to support them to get there. So thank you for that. I have a few questions. First, really love seeing the data about the reading academies. I know experts in the science of reading who I've heard from, and the literacy first leaders and people say it's a really high-quality program. I know that I've, I've heard that from people within the district as well and I appreciate you taking the time to look to see if it looks like it's making an impact and really appreciate the investment in listening to teachers. I'm glad TEA listened and made 60 hours, actually something like 60 hours, and really appreciate the work done with the administration to support having stipends to at least cushion that. And I do have a question of how campuses and the district are supporting educators. 60 hours is still a lot and to support educators to fit that in and also make sure that people understand or seeing that benefit and that teachers have been through it, you know, can share that information, that teachers who have yet to go through it kind of understand the larger purpose as we're seeing in the data.
So the teachers earn the PLED credits, so they still get the, the additional days off. I think last year campuses learned a lot of different strategies that they were using to help teachers get some additional time during the day. It may be as campuses are nearing submission dates that they use one of their PLCs to let the teachers, you know, have some time to catch up and get their assignments done. So there is a little bit more flexibility now that we have the extra planning time at the elementary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I thought I also heard you all talk about them being able to test out now as an option too.
Yes. Yes, so there is, there are additional options. So you can take what's called a demonstrated proficiency pathway and it's 12 days to complete the three artifacts. I mean, it still is a time investment and it can get you away from seat time of 60 hours. I do know to last year, there were some principals who were super creative with how they supported teachers in getting the reading academies done. Like, I wish I'd thought of some of that, it was amazing. And people saying, I'm bringing my laptop as the principal to the library, come with me, we're going to work through this together. And so then you create that culture of collaboration and learning as our fundamental purpose, which is really why we're here. So there are people that did, principals that led in, in ways that helped really support their teachers. Now having 45 minutes of PE and the additional planning time is also going to allow a little bit more flexibility and I might go to my PLC in this hour, but I still have 45 minutes over here if I choose to use my time that way and you may choose to use your time in other ways as well.
Thank you for that. And, and I know principals have a strong network and also every campus is an island as well. So is there a system to make sure that principals who have been at the campuses who were in the first round are sharing those creative solutions with campuses that are up next?
Yes, definitely. We'll provide it in a, in a PW and through one of our principal meetings. I think the other thing too is the PLC time is during the 45-minute PE time, but the teachers get an hour back for their own time. So that gives them a little bit more time to do other things so that they can, if they need to spend a few minutes working on that than they can during the day as well.
Thank you. And I want to really clarify what I heard that I think our community will be thrilled about. Ms. Petrosini, you brought it up and Dr. Majew reinforced it, that you've discovered that the MAP testing adds value in terms of it might be able to replace some of the other testing that has been relied on. Can you tell me a little bit more about that and kind of how campuses should expect to see that, how, how that will, it'll be made sure that campuses know that's okay to do, that they're encouraged to free that time for other kinds of instruction and then what families should expect to see as a result of that and maybe our students who were using Let's Talk?
I'll start and then I can let Heather add. So one of the things that we've been talking about, some of those old practices that have been around since I was a kid, that on Fridays, we do a spelling test, a reading test, a math test, a science test, a social studies test and Friday test, test, test. Well, why do we need to do that? If we're really planning instruction with a learning goal and a learning outcome and we're checking for understanding... and a learning outcome, and we're checking for understanding, then those Friday tests become obsolete because the MAP data gives us pretty much the same information. So if we're tracking learning as they're learning, then there's no need to be doing all these tests. And so we are pushing that, and that's the only way that we can make progress personally, is we're really looking at every student and setting some individual goals, and doing away with these old practices that we rely on that really don't help improve outcomes.
So part of PPFT, the teacher evaluation tool, is there is a student learning objective. Amy Ortiz is not here. She is our resident expert on this topic, but I will try to do my best here. So the SLO is 15% or 10%, 15% of your overall end-of-the-year evaluation. And part of the student learning objective is teachers choose an assessment at the beginning of the year and a group of students. So they may choose the class. They may choose a smaller group of students. It really depends on the class makeup. And then they give this paper test to the students. They take the test, and then after they've taught throughout the year, they give the assessment at the end of the year, and we're measuring growth. Like, how much did the student grow? What was sort of the knowing, learning, doing gap? And then did they make progress? In an effort to take something off of everyone's plate, which we so rarely get to say, they can use the SLO, they can use MAP as their SLO now. So math or reading, they can get that beginning-of-the-year benchmark score. And we need that data, right? We need that data in order to help plan a path forward for students. But then they can also use it as the end of the year because you need to use the same assessment, and we're looking for the same growth. There's, we have just taken two tests off the plate of students and families. And there's also a family report with MAP, too. I know as a parent, and I even shared it with my team, I received my son's parent report last year from his amazing fifth-grade teacher showing me, "Look how much he's grown, and look at the great work he's done this year." And so I really think it is a part where we can engage families in, "This is how your child is doing, and look at this beautiful chart." Or, "Hey, how can we work on this together so that we're able to support your student in acquiring these skills and strategies that he needs as a reader or as a mathematician?"
Great, thank you. I think that's very exciting. And I really appreciate the focus on making sure that educators and students are getting what they need without duplicative testing. So I think that's very exciting. Thank you. And I suspect when people discover that, they will be thrilled that their kids are getting time to do all kinds of other things, and that educators are too. So thank you. That's very happy news. Another parent question to really follow up on what you were talking about, the reports, and what Trustee Anderson was saying, just as parents, as partners, and how we're doing that. Two different things. How are we, are we using some of our time to help our educators? You know, we have this extra planning time. We know that relationships between teachers and families are very important. How are we supporting our teachers to really build, use some of that time to build relationships with families and help bring families into the educational experience as partners?
The time that they have in PLCs will give them an opportunity to think about strategies that they can utilize to do that. And then as we work through the year with this additional time that we have to actually meet together in small groups and do that, and if a campus happens to have a parent support specialist to utilize that person to do it as well, we'll build muscle memory, as Dr. Mays often likes to say, and get better at doing that over the course of the year and coming up with different strategies to do it. I mentioned a few when I was responding to Trustee Anderson earlier, and those are still in play. But then we'll continue to think about additional ways to do that.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Boswell, I think the other part of it is, because you have more time now, you get to do more with it, right? You know, when I had limited time, I needed to make sure that I committed that time to developing lessons and instruction for students instead of calling a parent, instead of sitting down and having a conversation. Now, since they have the time, they have a little more latitude to be a little more flexible, so I can allocate that time a little differently.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then one final question, which is, I really appreciate the lesson learned about the fatigue and the timing of the test, and the immediate shift and how that's being done. And I have a related question to that. We were hearing from families, we were hearing from teachers who knew the schedule, who told us that before it happened. And my hope is that we are learning from the people closest to these problems and listening sooner and adjusting faster. And I don't know if that's, you know, it's more a statement than a question, but there is a lot of knowledge on our campuses and the people closest to this that have a lot to tell us. And I hope that we are using that knowledge to stop these things before we go down that road when they're telling us things that we need to hear. So thank you.
To the statement or the question, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. Questions?
Sure. Thanks, y'all. I really appreciate this data. I've kind of missed these. I feel like it's been a while since we had a board monitoring report. So thank you, and it's nice to see you up there, Heather. And I got to give a shout out to Cunningham Elementary, where you came from. They got, was it six? Am I not allowed? Oh, okay. Never mind. Delete that. Okay, but can I give out shout-outs to stuff that was on, that was out here? Okay.
Was that a point of order?
Okay, so one of the things that I do appreciate about the MAP is that it allows us to see progress, and I love that. I think that's actually probably the most important thing that we get from the MAP. So I wanted to just, I know, I was looking, because as Trustee Ashi mentioned, I always look for the bright spots. Like, where do the schools that are just like knocking it out of the park? And I literally, every time I just go down like African-American ECDIS, okay, what schools are getting above 80%? And so I just wanted to recognize for math, Campbell Elementary and Norman Sims had 100% of their ECDIS African-American students making the projected growth for math. And I, we got to, like, thank you, Norman Sims and Campbell, two amazing schools. I would love to hear from those principals and understand what they're doing. And I, or you guys, talk to them and report back to us how you are actually going to these schools, learning from them, and spreading that throughout. So please, like, I really, really want to start seeing more of that because I think there's something there. And I know y'all are doing it, but we're not hearing about it. Same thing, I want to give a shout out to Summit, which had 100%, I think, of their Hispanic students who are economically disadvantaged, showing the growth on math. And then ODM knocked it out of the park with special ed and math. And then I got to give shout-outs for reading, too, y'all. So for the reading, ECDIS African-American students, there was, Overton and Matthews did really well. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. For Hispanic students, it was Becker, Brettwood, Norman Sims again, and Oak Springs. And for special ed, it was Hart, Overton, and Savala. So again, those are the schools that I would just love to, you know, hear from them, learn, okay? This is what we're doing, and this is how we're taking that throughout. And I know every school's different, and it's not a formula and anything like that. But just what can we learn would be super helpful, and it's just inspiring to see that. Then, the other thing, so like, I appreciated that Trustee Ashi brought up this question about like looking at our targets on the scorecard. And actually, that's on us as a board. We get to decide that. You know, if we, as a board, want to increase these targets. And I would highly recommend that we do because I, while I'm glad that we set our targets in a certain way, and we met most of them, we didn't meet all of them, but we met most of them. But then I had to look at the graph of our comparison to the state. And that, I want to, I'm wondering if someone can maybe put that up? It was this one here. But this is really, I would like for us as a board to really look at this and think about what this means for our students because it allows us to compare how we are doing with the rest of the state. And, you know, before the pandemic, we were pretty neck and neck with the state on reading for ECDIS. You can see there, we were at 34%, and the state was at 35% at grade level. Right? Because these are STAR scores. Correct. Okay. Then we all dipped during the pandemic. I don't even count the 21, 2021, because that was messed up. And we rebounded, but we're still, but now, instead of just being 3% lower than the state, we're about 20% lower than the state. And so we're actually falling behind when you look at it compared to the state. And that does worry me, and I'm sure it worries y'all, too. So I don't want us to get too caught up in like the green. Here, I'm being Debbie Downer again. That's what I do. Sorry. You know, I do want to make sure that we're setting our goals high enough. And maybe we need to be looking at state comparisons as well to help us formulate what targets we have because we shouldn't be 20%. I mean, it's eight percentage points, but it's 20% lower than the state. And we should at least be at state, you know, at the state, if you look there. So 33% versus 41 in reading. And then in math, also, we started almost neck and neck with the state before the pandemic for our ECDIS students. We all took a hit during the pandemic, and we're rebounding more slowly than the state is. The state is rebounding faster than we are. And so I think about, this is Austin. Austin is so great. What's going on here? And so I'm going to be, I appreciate that you guys gave us. We never, we weren't even getting this data a couple of years ago, so I should be appreciative. The first step is always like identifying, you know, what the situation is, and then we can start building a system to address that. But I have to always go back to staffing because that is the closest thing. That is, as you always, you know, often hear on here, like the teacher is the program, you know? Like, that is really the core thing. And, you know, when we get our, when we got the list of staff vacancies, I see a sea of, you know, Title I schools. You know, that's predominantly where the vacancies are. And those are predominantly where we're seeing lower test scores. And so I do ask to see some creativity from the administration because I'm not really quite sure. I know we're in a bind, but I also know that we are charged with this task. And so I'm, like, what else can we? I mean, you don't have to answer it right now, but like, I really get worried when I see the vast majority of our vacancies are in Title I schools. And that is recreating a predictable problem. And we're going to get the same outcomes if we don't do something about that. So I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but I'm just saying, as a trustee, I'm looking at that, too. The other thing I wanted to kind of mention was parents, parents as partners in this work. I'm just going to mention again, Dr. Mays, report cards. Can we please send those home on paper? That is my personal pet peeve. Because if we don't send them home, we're only getting like 20% of parents accessing report cards online. I had trouble. I couldn't even access it on my phone. But I have a computer, a desktop, so I could do it there. And I just don't, you know, parents got to know how their kids are doing, right? And so this is, if they're not going to access it on blend, we have an obligation. We can't really expect that the parent is going to ask the registrar of their kid's school for paper. We should just be doing that by default. I think that's an equity issue. And it shows an expectation that we believe parents are partners, which is one of our board values. So that's why I bring it up. And same thing with STAR scores. The state gives us very, very excellent detailed feedback on STAR. You can actually go in there and see which questions your kid got wrong. And if you really want to be a terrible parent, you could grab their kid away from the TV and say, "Hey, come look at what you got wrong three months ago." Let's see if you can work through these. But like, I'm wondering if there's some easy-to-use printed thing we could give our parents, just like we as a board are increasing our capacity at looking at data, this administration is, our teachers are. I think we can bring our parents along in some way in that process as well so that it's accessible to them. But otherwise, thank you so much for this information, putting together this excellent report. And I really look forward to, you know, seeing how we address some of these challenges.
Thank you. Trustees, any other questions? So if not, thank you all very much, and thank you, Dr. Mays, as well. As part of our commitment to monitoring, the last question is to ask if trustees accept the report presented as it aligns with our goals and constraints, and if not, to ask if this is still the right strategy for the district. So trustees, please raise your right hand if you're ready to accept tonight's report. Awesome. Thank you all, trustees, for taking part in our shared commitment to students and student outcomes. So we will now move to item six, our information reports and updates. Dr. Mays, would you please introduce the next item, which is the opening of schools update?
Yes, sir. All right, you can go to the next slides. Dr. Reach? So of course, we've opened up with our three areas of focus, safety and security, culture and climate, and student achievement. Hopefully, you all have kind of heard that as we've communicated, you know, through phone, through email, at various meetings, that this is our focus, even at the recent BASH. Every opportunity that we get to share that information, we want to share it, not just myself, but including our campus leaders. And so you can go to the next slide. All right, so again, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to share an update on the launch of this school year. And so like I said, I've been sharing that information about our three goals throughout as we visited communities and different groups. And so we spent the first two days on campuses, including Zilker Elementary, Linder Elementary, Sattler Means, Young Women's Leadership Academy, McCallum High School, and TA Brown Elementary, Better Check Middle School, and Bowie High School. And thank you to the trustees that were able to go out and take advantage of the opportunity to visit those campuses. As you can see within the pictures, the kids were excited to be back, and the staff welcomed them enthusiastically. A special shout-out to principals at each of these schools for a great first day, A.J. Pitts at Zilker, Melissa Rodriguez at Linder, Deshaun Roby at Sattler Means, Nicole Griffin at McCallum, Bobby Ortiz Rodriguez at TA Brown, Sarah Atkinson at Better Check, and Mark Robinson at Bowie. And so I definitely felt special as I visited the campuses. I had never been greeted by a full band at McCallum and Director Carol Nelson, who was able to share with me, "Hey, baby." And the Bowie stars that made me feel right at home at Bowie with Coach Bill Nasky, as they wanted to make sure that as I charged them with being the best, not in the state, but the best in the nation at what it is that they do, they wanted to make sure that I got a chance to see them at work. And so we got a chance to see our show, see a show from the Bowie Silver Stars, and Trustee Singh was able to partake in that. And so again, a smooth start to the school year doesn't happen by magic. There's a lot of work that takes place during the summer. And so with that being said, I do want to give Chief Stevens an opportunity to kind of share with you all some of the foundational work that we're doing to support closing some of these gaps that we just talked about.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, Interim Superintendent Mays, and Board of Trustees. The first slide we're going to talk about contains two different pieces. One is the student enrollment, and then the other is what we did over the summer. I'm going to start with the student enrollment side. And if you recall, back in June, we approved a budget that was based on a 74,713 student enrollment anticipation. That's the projection piece. What happens over the summer is we have a student information system in where all of the students are rolled over in July, and then we enroll new students or we register new students for enrollment. As of Monday, the first day of school, within our student information system, we had 74,482. However, one of the other pieces that we rolled out, and this is basically to help us get ahead of the leveling process, is every one of our campus principals was trained in the first 10-day process where they are actually doing physical counts. So the first day of school, it was like a freeze point in time. They physically counted all the students. They're turning in the number. Day two, it's a physical count again, plus any students that are absent. We've asked schools to do this for the very, you know, just 10 days of the school year. On Wednesday, which was just- Wednesday, which was yesterday, our physical count of students is sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-seven. So as schools are turning in their numbers, you're gonna see there's a huge mismatch right now. I see the look of confusion. What it is, is you have to remember, in our student information system, we roll students over. So if they've moved out of Austin, all of those kind of things, it could be that they haven't requested records yet. On our side, we know that we're still doing student transfers at this point in time, but we also know that we're still doing our pre-K enrollment. So we know we've got about a thousand students to get through that application process in our early childhood programs. And we are working, and schools have some strategies that we laid out, in terms of if a student hasn't shown up, what do you do, you know, to get them back into school, send those reminders that school has started, because it takes a moment sometimes for some of our, our schools and kiddos to get back in the swing of things. So while the schools are turning in their counts every day, I actually do spend my evenings looking at that. And so I'll give you just an example of where we've seen something. So Rodriguez Elementary is a good example. We had a kindergarten classroom that I believe on the second day of school had one teacher that's allocated to kindergarten, but it had thirty-three students. So we reached out to the principal to see, you know, do you actually have the thirty-three? Because sometimes it's just a typo or that kind of thing, and they do have thirty-three. So we've put a substitute in there with that teacher to help manage that classroom until we get to leveling. So we do have needs in the district. I can give you some other examples. Go Valley First Grade, Houston is kindergarten, where, where we're trying to address them. Schools will also be looking across their grade levels and trying to address those things. If I can move, if my numbers are really low at fourth grade, but I have a high need in second grade, I can internally move my own teachers, you know, if, if it matches for language. And so next week is when we've asked principals to look really carefully across grade levels, and this includes high school, to look across their master schedule, to see, do I need to balance classes and all of those pieces? So we are monitoring the student enrollment every day, and we are looking at the classrooms. And that's why we put that process in place, so that we could identify where we actually have hotspots. On the exciting side of the summer, we did do some really great training for our leaders when they came back. We had new principal training on July eleventh and twelfth, when they first stepped back in the district. But you've heard the presentation before us refer to the Leadership Institute, and it really was three days of, I, you know, like, honestly, like, it was really three great days. And principals were in, like, very, very high spirits. They enjoyed their three days of training. And it was very focused on the things that you, as a board, have identified in your scorecard, which include things like special education services, professional learning communities, which you're gonna hear people refer to as PLCs. We did do a thing on distributed leadership, meaning as an administrative team, how are you distributing out work so that it's manageable and you, you cover the functions that you need to cover? Because that is a skill set, to know what to give what people on your team. And then we did a lot of work around, how do you create a positive culture and climate for students and staff? But we also did a lot of that work for our principals as well. And I know some of you probably saw the reboot box tweets and all of those kind of things. And so we're trying to do some things differently, even for our administrators, to welcome them back. Okay? So now let's talk about the, you know, the big question mark, and that is on our current status of vacancies and new hires. But before I actually address this slide, I just wanna take a moment to let you all know, you probably have some of the most dedicated loyal employees on the eighth floor of this building than people actually realize. These were people that did not take their Fridays off. They came in on Saturdays. They came in on Sundays. They've worked till eleven o'clock at night. They have probably taken in requests for, you know, referrals for employment, over three thousand. And they are working with a very, very convoluted system. And I know you've heard us talk about doing an ERP. That ERP streamlines our process. Right now, for every single employee, we have people who are manually entering that information about seven times for every single employee. And so you take that times what we've hired, and we're talking countless hours, on top of collecting paperwork, doing I-9 sessions. So I do just kind of want you to know that they have been working very hard. So it's not by lack of effort or lack of trying on, on our vacancies. But I, we actually ended up in a pretty good spot, as we see on the page. So right now, you're gonna see, we do have vacancies. We currently have a hundred and sixty teacher vacancies. They're broken down by elementary, middle, and high. I can break it down further. At elementary schools, we have thirty-nine bilingual. We do have, we have four PE, but one of those we actually have somebody in process for, so we're down to three. We have four art, eight music. Special education, we have sixty-one across elementary, middle, and high. That is probably one of our highest areas and our hardest-to-staff areas, which we all know that is, and that's across the board. We are coming up with some ways to try to look at how we can do that. The special ed department, we've been working with them to actually look at numbers, and, you know, what can we do on that side as well? In terms of teacher assistance, which is instructional support, we have a breakdown of eighty-eight in special education, thirty-eight in PE, and thirty in other for our teacher assistance. That does equal a hundred and fifty-six. I, I understand that, and I have a hundred and thirty-nine on the chart. This just gives you an example of our system. We have seventeen that are in process. So every, and I know Trustee Singh, and I know, I know she's not sitting here, we send out the vacancy report, but you need to understand, like, in the sequence of things, when somebody turns in a recommendation, we take that employee all the way through the process. We get them in the position. And there are times where we don't take down that vacancy posting. Literally, this, we won't take down vacancy postings until probably after this hiring season. So another couple of weeks. So always what you see posted out there is not actually accurate. And when I walk in at eight o'clock, the number is different than five o'clock when we walk out, because we've got all these people in process. But we don't immediately take down a posting. There's some employees we go all the way through, and then they decline the position. So we start over. So there is a lot of that in terms of what we're doing. At the beginning of the school year, as of the first day of school, we had hired six-hundred-and-eighty-eight teachers, and non-teachers hired were six-hundred-and-ninety-four. We have about two-hundred-and-eight right now employees in the middle of that process. They've been recommended, but we're not fully done with all the paperwork and, and screening. The next slide will show you just some of the things we've done. And this is where I will tell you that we've been very appreciative of our campus principals, because we talked to them on July eleventh. And we have a very talented person named Kelly Kirkham, who designs all these and gets them out there on Twitter or Facebook. And we did ask all of our principals that when you see those, to retweet them over and over and over and over, because that's the only way we gain traction, for people to show up at our job fairs. So I would ask the same thing of the board. When we're getting ready to do those job fairs and stuff, if you see it, please, you all have bigger audiences, I know, than me, because I don't think I have, like, five followers. So don't, you're not using me. But we have people who have a lot of followers in our group, so we would ask you the same, is to retweet those. When the principals started doing that, it really did increase the showing at our job fairs. And then have we gotten creative? We've tried to get really, 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 as creative as we could. So the next slide will show you some of the things that we've done. Any teacher that was a retired teacher out of our system from 2019 to 2021, we are making eligible for full rehire. And we're doing that by using Essar funds to pay their salary, and then using our local funds to pay the surcharge. So that is, that is one thing we can do, because otherwise, it just, it would cost us more. But since we're using Essar and our local, it, it balances out, out of our local bucket. We are asking our retired teachers of 2022 that they can come back, based on TRS rules, to be mentors for all of our new teachers or our new employees. And right now, we have a cohort of about twenty retired teachers that are willing to come in and take a caseload of new teachers to help them, you know, in anything that they need in terms of mentorship. So that was something new we did. The other thing is, is we can hire candidates that have a bachelor's degree. We can hire them for one year under an emergency teaching permit. And we have done that. And then we will, you know, get them into an ACP program that is allowed under TEA rules. We have approximately probably twelve to fifteen that we've done. We're cohorting those. Our professional learning department is working very closely, so that we do some specialized training for that cohort of individuals. In addition, the other assistance that we'll be asking for is we have gone back to the District of Innovation Committee, and we are broadening our District of Innovation abilities. That committee approved it, and it is now going to DAC, and we will bring it to the board in September. And so we would like to ask for your support on that when it does come in September. Overall, I feel like our schools, you know, for the most part, are really in a pretty good spot. But I also am looking at, what is our physical body count to, you know, of students in terms of versus our projected? So our next step is going to be going through each of our schools. And if there is a vacancy at that school, looking at their numbers to actually see if we need that vacancy at this point. Like, do we need to continue to hire for that vacancy, or do we put it on hold until we see our student numbers?
So I do wanna tell, if you can go back, go, I do wanna publicly let Ms. Stevens know that we appreciate you, and we thank you.
It's not me that's doing the work.
I know she got tired of me calling up and asking about where are we on vacancies. And, but we do wanna thank Ms. Stevens and the entire team. And that process, whether it's with, you know, what we're currently dealing with with human capital, or what we deal with with our pre-K enrollment process, is essential that we automate those processes so that we can see this stuff move a lot quicker. So thank you. Ms. Casas, I believe it's you and your team, Mr. Hicks.
We'll wait for all the presentations before opening up the questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Chief Casas, and again, Mr. Hicks, will be coming back forward to cover this next part. Again, this next part kind of addresses where we are currently with, you know, it's a combination of the vacancies that Chief Stevens just shared, and our implementation of the planning time initiative. So I think they're collaborating about what's about to happen.
So we're excited that we have started our planning initiative for this year with the redesigned essential areas. As you can see, we have a comparison here of the new master schedule guidelines and parameters compared to the previous master schedule. You've seen this before. Essentially, what it does, it allows us to have additional ninety minutes a week for planning opportunities for elementary school teachers. The next slide. So the, this is a comparison of the number of minutes of, minimum number of minutes of art and music that were, that are received this year compared to last year. And you can see there is a difference there of five-hundred-and-thirty minutes between last year and this year. And that works out to over a course of thirty, a thirty-six-week school year, of fifteen fewer minutes of art and fifteen minutes fewer of music per week at the minimum. And so forty-six, or fifty-nine percent of the seventy-eight elementary schools, though, we wanna note, are exceeding the baseline of the forty-three-hundred-and-twenty minutes of art and music over the course of the entire school year. So we are going to be implementing, we have implemented a monitoring plan to ensure that we have strong implementation and fidelity to what we expect with regards to this plan. And a survey of the elementary staff regarding essential areas will be part of that. And we have proposed dates for that right now. We're developing questions around what the survey will look like. And then we're also going to be conducting listening sessions to ensure that we hear directly from those with the boots on the ground with regards to how the plan is working, what, what is working, what's not working, and then we'll make immediate adjustments. We've already, I've already gathered some data from teachers and principals over the first few days of this school year, just to get an idea of how people were feeling about the plan. And the comments range from that they're excited about the extra planning time, to that there are some kinks that are being worked out, but they are feeling good about what the possibilities are. And next? And, and there's some pride.
Dr. Reach. So Dr. Reach is making his way up. Last year, we, we did earn a B. Well, in 2019, we did earn a B. And so this year, we were able to earn a B. I think that the Bs are a little different, and Dr. Reach will talk about some of the nuance between this B that we earned and the 2019.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm excited to share about accountability for Austin ISD. So just this last Monday, the state of Texas released accountability ratings for districts and campuses, the first time they have done so since 2019. As a reminder, in 2020, campuses shut down right around the spring break time, and STAR was not administered at all that year. And so no ratings were provided. The following year, for 2021, why STAR was administered, the state, through legislative action, provided no ratings and no accountability measures, and paused any accountability sanctions. So looking at Austin ISD for this year, this kind of breaks down the district scorecard, we talked about score, I shouldn't use that term, the district accountability ratings and their scores. So what you see is our scaled score for 2022, and then we've compared it with 2019, so you can see where some of these changes are. Overall, the district received an eighty-eight or a B. That includes receiving an eighty-nine in student achievement, and an eighty-nine in school progress, and an eighty-six in closing the gaps. Those are the different domains. And then each of those domains have some subitems underneath them. And the one that I wanna call out is under school progress, and that's academic growth and relative performance. As you can see, our relative performance, which compares our campuses and our district to like campuses, maintained the same at ninety-one, which is an A overall. And our academic growth went from a seventy-six to a ninety, an A, which we're really excited about. Now, some of you may realize, how do you get a scaled score of an eighty-nine if the two parts that make it up is a ninety and a ninety-one? That should average out to a ninety-point-five. However, the state of Texas has some rules around accountability, and this is the first of, I think, three rules I'm gonna mention tonight, that add a little bit of complexity to these rules. And they state that for any district that has a campus that receives an F in the school progress domain, that district may not earn an A for that same domain. So Austin ISD actually earned a ninety, but because of that rule, it got moved to an eighty-nine and a B. But we're still very proud of all that our campuses did to get to that ninety and ninety-one on academic growth and relative performance. So looking at some of our campus accountability and how that's changed. So that first column provides the ratings that TEA assigns to these campuses. This year, Austin ISD had forty schools, or thirty-two-point-five percent of all of our schools, that received an A overall. In comparing that to the state, there's eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-six different schools in the state of Texas, and twenty-six-point-three percent of those received an A in Texas. So Austin ISD outperformed the state average on the number of A campuses we have. And that's also up from 2019, where we were at sixteen-point-nine percent. You'll also notice that under D and F, and this is kind of rule number two that I'm gonna talk about, we have, I added a term that said not rated, but we still included where they were in the scoring. So just for clarification, a D would be between sixty and sixty-nine, and an F would be anything below fifty-nine. And forty is the minimum score. And so due to the pandemic, the state actually passed 59. And 40 is the minimum score. And so due to the pandemic, the state actually passed a temporary rule, call it Senate Bill 1365. And that rule states that any school with a scaled score less than a 70 will simply be considered not rated in the accountability system and for state sanctioned purpose. This rule only applies for this year. So next year, there will not be not rated campuses. But overall, I do want to point out, and why we broke it up this way, is you'll see that our number of F, number of D, and number of C campuses all decreased. And again, it was our B, it was our A campuses that really saw that major growth. And then we also have some other campuses that are actually not rated, not to make things too confusing, because that's still the term the state uses. And these are just schools that do not have a large enough sample, or they are exempt from the accountability system. Many of our trustees are aware of our constant advocacy for Rose Dale, which in the past would actually receive an F because not enough kids tested. And we advocated over and over, we had a previous trustee who helped us advocate for this in the state legislator, in state legislative, and the state now automatically takes schools like Rose Dale and a few others and counts them in the not rated sample, so that we don't have to go through an appeal for a campus that never should have been in that area to begin with. But we also have some other campuses that fall under the not rated, just because they're simply too small. For instance, we have a school at Austin State Hospital that does not have enough testers, so it will never receive a rating. They also provided distinction designations, again, for the first time since 2019. And I want to call out our ELA reading, where 31 schools received an ELA or reading distinction designation. And I want to call out top 25% growth, where 32% of our schools received that. And then also post-secondary, where 24% of the schools received it. And in addition, Austin ISD received a distinction for the district for post-secondary. So we're excited about that as well. And then I just mentioned, social studies is only available for middle or high schools, so it has a smaller sample size overall. So that's why that five is not quite aligned with how we did in ELA, math and science, which every school is eligible for.
So I do want to take a point of privilege. I know Mr. Hicks and Dr. Stoudt are back there, and we have a lot of executive directors that aren't in the room to recognize and celebrate them and the work that they've done with our campuses. And so Cunningham Elementary is one that I know trustees seem wanted to recognize. And Heather, you can go ahead and stand up. Heather Petrazzini at Cunningham Elementary, Highland Park Elementary School, and Lassa received all eligible distinctions. And so that's why she's sitting here helping us out with all of this work. So, so thank you to those leaders and those campuses. I also wanted to recognize Walnut Creek, as you can see, they went from a D to a B, went from a 66 to an 85. Andrews Elementary went from an F to a C. They went from a 56 to a 74. Better Check, again, we got a chance to see this work, went from a D at a 64 to an 88 with a B. Martin Middle School, yeah, go ahead. So for the record, Mr. Principal Urban is at now at Aikens, again, continuing to do that work. And again, Martin went from a F with a 58 to a C with a 70. Yes. Sallar Means went from an F with a 59 to a C with a 74. And then Covington went from a D with a 68 to a C with a 78. And I would be remiss, I would be remiss and punished if I did not go back and recognize principal names besides Heather Petrazzini. So at Walnut Creek, we had DeNora Boras. At Andrews Elementary, we had new principal Audrey Guerrero. At Better Check, again, we had Principal Michael Urban. At Martin Middle School, we had the infamous Brandy Griden. Sallar Means, we had Principal Deshaun Robey. And at Covington Middle, we had Tide Choice leading that work. And so all of those principals, as well as the Office of School Leadership, you all are to be commended for that significant work. So we did want to celebrate them tonight. To help us on the next slide, please, to help us with, you know, a culture of voting, I do want to turn it over to Dr. Reach to talk about some of our efforts there.
Thank you. So I did want to share one other thing that the administration wants to bring forward to the Board for possible action and to start bringing forward to the community, to gather some feedback. And that's focused around one issue that we've heard with safety. And we're going to have a safety update right after this. But one hot topic has been how we maintain safety for our campuses on Election Day. Many of our schools are used as polling sites, and when that occurs, we are, as part of our agreement and as part of our community work, we allow any member of the public into our schools to go vote. Our schools have done amazing work to ensure that voters are welcomed in and that kids are safe, but it is a struggle. And there's a lot that goes into planning all of that. And there is still times where people unfortunately walk through the school thinking, well, I parked behind the school. And it's been a safety issue that we've noticed for some time. Recognizing this heightened sense of safety that we all want to look for for our campuses, we would like to propose changing Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 8th, to a student holiday in providing that time for staff, both at the campus and out of campuses, to take part in professional development. Just to provide some more information on this, by doing this, students would still receive enough instructional minutes, so we would not need to add time anywhere else. And it would not change us, it would not require us to change any other days or any bell schedules to make this adjustment. And we would be able to use professional development time for the staff during those days. To kind of go along with this, we would also like to bring back to the Board something that we did about five years ago, and that was a culture of voting resolution for the district, just so that the district can reaffirm its support for our civic duty for voting, about our work to increase voter registration, especially among our high school students while they turn 18, which we're excited for all of our high schools to take part in. And then also consider how Austin ISD could allow staff time to actually go vote during that Election Day. So we hope to bring this information back to the Board in September with some feedback and some more information for possible action. But we want to start sharing this out with campuses, recognizing that one thing that we need to do is prepare for assisting our families on that Tuesday, where students may not be in the instructional room, but how we can still provide support for our families and our staff.
And trustee, that concludes our report.
Dr. Mason, I mentioned one other thing I wanted to.
Sure, go for it.
Sorry, I wanted to highlight for Better Check also that they received four designations more than any other middle school in Austin ISD, and really proud of that, too.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. First, let me see if I have all the names. So who am I missing? I have Heather Cunningham, Heather Petrazzini, I have Stacia Krezinzi at Lassa, and Katie Pena at Highland Park. There you go. Those are my three principals that I left.
Principal of the Year, Katie Pena.
Katie's name?
No, it's the Principal of the Year, Katie Pena.
Principal of the Year, Katie Pena.
Awesome. Well, I, nice to follow, great news. So trustees, are there any questions? I'm about to finish the presentation. Trustee Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. First question, recruitment efforts outside of social media.
Yeah. So in terms of recruitment, so we use social media a lot. We've used our webpage a lot. We did contact news outlets like the, like we had, we were on the news one night. I know Norma Castillo in Human Capital has done a lot of interviews, and she always mentions when our next one is. The other thing is, is we have set up at community events. So like, there was a Saturday when trustee Zapata asked us to set up a table at a community event. And so we've set up at community events when we know of them, and there's tables for recruitment purposes. But we haven't done things like billboards. We didn't do billboards, and we didn't do flyers, which are additional things we can do. I know some of our schools did the yard signs on our, for our job fair kind of thing, but those are the kind of things we can expand on.
And, so you made a comment about putting a position on hold to see until student numbers increase.
Correct.
My concern about that, let's talk District One. So all too often, because, you know, the first thing people talk about is enrollment. That would hurt a lot of campuses in my district. How are you, when you say put a position on hold until enrollment increases, you know, let's, I'm not going to call out a campus, but let's just say a campus in District One, though they may not have the student numbers, but that position that you are looking to put on hold is, is a vital position that may be needed in the classroom. So how do you balance that out?
So when we get to those, we work with the campus principal. So I'll give you an example, because it's probably easiest right now at high school. So a high school may have a position open, they rework their master schedule and say, I don't need that. We have figured it out with our schedule. And so we just, we take it down and we just put a hold on it. It doesn't go away. So if the school comes back later and says, I actually do need it, then we'll repost it. The difference is at elementary is there is a part, a point in time of the year when it does kind of stabilize. And just historically, in a lot of districts, it's between day seven and day 10. And so that's when we'll do leveling. So I do have schools right now who don't need as many teachers as we've allocated to them because the kids didn't show up there. But then I've got schools like Rodriguez in Houston who desperately need a teacher right now. And so that FTE, what I call the, the position itself, will move from one campus to another campus. And in this case, we have across the district, a lot of those positions filled, so we will move people. Now, when we move people, what we try to look at is, if they are at X school, we look at the area right around that school, because a lot of people want to live by, want to work by where they live. I said it in the reverse. But the other thing is, is they also have a morning, morning pattern established to get to work. So we try to keep them within, like, the proximity of where they're used to driving. So if they were dropping their own students off, that kind of thing. If we cannot find something like right in that proximity as far as a school, then we'll go to the feeder pattern. If we don't find anything in the feeder pattern, then we will move them, like, to the next one closest. And so we do kind of that work to move the people. But when we have staffed for, or, and I don't mean staff, I don't mean staffed with actual people right now. We have allocated for X number of teachers in our district, and we were anticipating a student enrollment of 74,717. And right now, I have actually 65,000 students that I've, that means I've got teachers in the system. I just need to get them where they're needed.
And could I add to that, please?
Yes.
So also trustee Anderson, and we think about specifically in District One, you know, that's where I've done all of my work, all of my years as principal. We sometimes will have situations where we want to minimize disruption to kids later. And so if we have a grade level where we don't think we're going to need that particular position, we try to think ahead and make sure that we allocate the kids accordingly so that we won't have to make a disruption later. And then we might be able to utilize that particular position somewhere else within the school, or make a deal with another school to be able to move them, as Ms. Stevens was saying, close by, so that we can help another school within the same district. And so we try to think smart about that and to minimize disruption.
I have never been a fan of leveling. I have never. And my, my hope is, when you are looking to do that, though the campus may not have a need, the students do. So I've seen the impact of that. I have never been a fan of that, never.
And I truly understand that. And I would more than welcome, we're actually going to use next Friday's, August 29th number, like, physical numbers. And it's, it's this work on the backend, but I would be more than happy to even do like a small group trustee thing, so you can kind of see it across the district, to see kind of like what we're looking at.
Okay, sign me up.
Yes. That would be Dr. Reach scheduled this.
Sign me up. My, my next one is, how many counselor vacancies do we have?
You would ask me the one number. I didn't, I didn't look up. Let me grab my phone, and I'm sure somebody's probably texted it to me.
So while we're waiting, I'll go back to my first question about recruitment efforts. So you said no billboards or nothing like that?
No, we don't do a whole lot of print.
What about just simply, you know, going to different community events and actually having an individual there to tell their story, why they chose AISD? Like, that's the one thing that I have not heard. I've seen some really good marketing stuff, but there are a lot of educators in this district who can tell their story, why they chose Austin ISD. And we, from what I see, we don't do a good job telling that piece of it, the why. You know, you trying to get people to come and work for us, why? Why should they come? You know, I hear, oh, well, this district pays this amount, and this district pays that amount. So if it were me, I would say, you know, hey, well, why, why should I come work for Austin ISD? And I know the, the stuff you have on the flyer, that's good, but an actual person that's been in the district saying, this is why I chose Austin ISD, even though the pay isn't what X district would make. So.
We can look at that. I would be more than happy. I know we do take some of our principals on that when we go on recruiting trips, you know, to some of the universities and those kind of things. But we have not taken, like, actual teacher, classroom teachers on those. But we can expand that, or even within our own community events.
To your point, trustee Anderson, I think, I want to say about two days ago, we, we have a list, and trustee Zapata isn't here. One of the things that we recognize is that, man, trustee Zapata has a superpower in her organizing efforts. And so really being able to leverage, and Gloria Bedoya, who's usually here, also has similar superpower. And so really trying to make sure that we lean into opportunities that, at the grassroots, you know, community level, that are available to us. And so we had the Givens at the Park event this past, we're talking about identifying those events and making sure that we always have a significant presence in those spaces so that our community understands the relationship that we want to build with them. So.
But not, not so much of a presence where, you know, like, I remember before I got on the Board, I used to go to AISD events, and it would be more AISD people than community folk. So not so much of a presence where people's like, oh, okay, they trying to sell something. Just having somebody there saying why they chose to work in Austin ISD, like, that is, that is the most powerful thing than any piece of paper that you can put a list of stuff on. Somebody saying why they chose to work here. That's, that's the piece that, that I don't see, but. That's, that's the piece that, that I don't see, but.
Yeah.
I'm still waiting.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay, so what, what, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and take it a little deeper.
Okay.
Where are those 27 at?
Okay, that I don't have by text, but I can get you the list.
Well, my, my concern is.
I'll get you the list this evening. Twenty-seven.
So how are we supporting students' mental healths? If we have, I'm, I'm gonna take it back to District One. Say of the 27, 15 are in District One. How are we supporting students who need a counselor? Who's there? Who do they go to if a counselor is not there?
Not there.
I have the great Dr. Twyla Williams, she's making her way up here to kind of support with that.
And it's 18 at elementary, six middle, but I'm going to get you the actual list of schools. Three high school, but I can get you the actual list. And I'll send, I got it via email.
Thank you, Dr. Twyla Williams, for joining the party.
Yeah.
So we have been working with the licensed mental health professionals. We also worked with STL and CPN, Stacia Pascal, who's the director. And so we have created a robust schedule to cover all of the campuses with vacancies. We have met with those principals to let them know if a student makes an outcry, how to access the resources that they need to support the students. So we started with the first week of school and we have since added to that list for the next two weeks. And so we are just doing a rotating schedule among our team to ensure that campuses have support. In addition to our team, I have Dr. Wilson here, who is a supervisor of licensed mental health professionals, and also our counseling coordinators. Shakira Hamilton-Adams is our high school counseling coordinator. Daniela Garcia is our middle school. And Danielle Camarillo is our elementary counseling coordinator. And so we have also been making rounds and checking in with principals, supporting campuses, and being visible on the campuses. I personally called every sub on the counseling substitute list for AIST to see if they were available to come. And so having talked to principals, they are in the process of either, either waiting for paperwork to go through to hire. They've also secured some subs. And so we have just working the plan and, and being as supportive as we can to support the campuses.
Thank you.
Trustee Ashley.
So Ms. Stevens, I think you have one of the hardest jobs. And I think that that's very true, particularly this time of year. Because yes, there's certainly been a teacher shortage this year that we've all felt across the nation more acutely. But there's been a teacher shortage for years because there's been an alternative certification program since I was in college. And I know that that is, and particularly for special education, bilingual, and science, which I know makes up a large number of this. Now, the counselor thing, that's a whole, that's a whole new, super fun problem that I'm so sorry that we are, are trying to tackle. And I also know too, and you kind of mentioned a second ago, and in an effort to be part of the solution and not, not part of a problem, because I, when I saw the list that you, that was, that you sent out to us, I noticed and saw some of the schools that I know and reached out to those principals and found out that a lot of those positions had already been filled, or they were in the process of being filled. So is there a, a way for trustees to, to see, and it doesn't sound like there is, but I'm going to ask the question anyway, just to make sure I understand, is there a way for us to see a kind of most recent or most up-to-date listing? Or I don't, and I know that that's, I feel like I'm kind of asking you the impossible question.
No, you aren't, but it is an impossible question with our current system. I mean, and that's why literally the minute we send it out, it's, it's not valid. But one of the things we did do, which might be, you might find more useful, is we did ask principals, we took the vacancies that were at a school on July 25th, we sent it to all the principals. And because I honestly thought, you know, we did some moving around of board meetings, but we wanted to have that available to you all if we presented August 11th, so you kind of would know the status of your schools. And we called that the contingency plan. And I do have that, that I would be more than happy to share with trustees. And what it has is at the bottom, there's two tabs. It's teachers and it's teacher assistants. And so principals have gone in and said, I filled, I have a sub, I don't need it. So, so they updated their campus vacancies. So you're going to see the ones where they've recommended to hire or they filled the position. And that is way more accurate than, than what we're doing, which is pulling off of the website and downloading into an Excel sheet. So I would be more than happy to share that with you all.
And then, you know, I was wondering if you might be able to speak to the realities of what happens those first couple of weeks of school, even before COVID, with hiring? And is what we're seeing right now any different than you might see in a regular school year? Meaning the flurry of hires that tends to happen these first couple of weeks?
No. But we are going to, and I will tell you, we've learned a lot. So there are some things we are going to put in place a little bit differently for next year. Because there's part of that mantra that if, to hire better, you hire early. And once, once we start real recruiting, which is general, not real recruiting, we recruit all year long. Human Capital used to be a very, you know, specific period of time. Now it's year round. But when we do the heavy duty hiring in March, so I will just tell you some of the things we're looking at is our job bears used to be voluntary. So if a principal wanted to come, they could come. So we are going to change some of, of those types of practices because if you're at a job fair and we advertise it and we have lots of people there, even if you don't have a vacancy at that moment in time, if you interview someone and we're all principals sitting in this room and we're interviewing, if I find a good candidate, even if I don't have a vacancy right now, I can say, great candidate, and we can do hire earlys. And so there are some pieces that we are going to put in place so that we don't get inundated. And I will tell you, our, our flurry came beginning July 25th. And on July 25th, it was almost like a tsunami of paper, of, of recommendations coming in. And that just hit at the wrong time. So we're still clearing candidates that they've submitted as recommendations. So, yes.
And then just kind of to speak to trustee Anderson's question, I, I know you've mentioned it before, I was wondering if you could speak to the relationships with the educational institutions, the higher ed institutions here in Austin, not just University of Texan, but Texas, but Houston, Tillotson, and St. Ed's, and Concordia, and the list goes on. What, have you, have you changed what you're doing with those institutions in order to not make them, let them take one foot out of college and their next step goes into our buildings?
So I will tell you, starting last year, when we, we saw some of this coming, I mean, just, just by virtue of every district in the, in the state of Texas did, we started doing some really different things with our student teacher group. Because we actually get a lot of student teachers in Austin, probably more than a lot of districts, just because we've got so many universities. So we did some things differently with student teachers. We did some social events. We did some connecting with some of our, like our current teachers, our current principals. And that really did kind of, like there were candidates that we signed early. So one of the things we're looking at now is our pool of student teachers that will be starting, because they usually don't start until mid to late September in our schools, is doing things and literally signing them for January. And so a lot of these college students that are currently in Austin at least intend to stay through the school year because they have apartment leases and those kind of things. And so once we get them here, doing some things different so that they feel like they're, they've found their like home and stay with us after that. So we are doing some different things there. Also with our partnerships, I will tell you, we were a little disappointed the other day. St. Edwards did notify us that they were no longer going to offer their education degree. And so, so in some universities, it is working with some other pools of degree programs to go out and say, you know, if you get a math degree or if you get a science degree, you can also teach. Because like there's, they have programs that are established, and I know we've done some of that work.
That's great to hear. I have two more questions. One of them has to do with leveling. I share the sentiments of my colleague, trustee Anderson, who's not here right now, but she's with me in spirit. Never been a fan of leveling. I have shared that with you. Particularly in our elementary grades, I struggle with that every year. I think particularly when we talk about things that can impact student performance, leveling in the elementary ages is one of those things that I do think can impact student performance. Because, and as a early childhood teacher, I know what those relationships are, and they are quickly for little kids. So just publicly want to say, I'm not a fan. Now, I would like to speak a little bit about high school. What, because we do, you know, in the elementary levels, up until fourth grade, we have limits that are placed upon us to say, this is how many students you can have in a classroom. But you reach that fifth grade and above and, and there's not any set number, state mandated number of classroom size. And I was wondering if you could speak to, I know that we did our staffing ratios based on 32, 30, okay, I'm in 28, somewhere around in there? You go ahead and say, Ms. Stevens.
So in fifth grade, it's one to 25. And, and we, and generally when we start looking at them, we'll let them go up to like 27 or so.
Right.
And then after that, there's a lot of factors that come into play. Sometimes it's the size of the classroom, sometimes it's how many teachers do you have on your campus. But generally, like, when, once you start getting up to like 29 or 30, that's, that's a lot in a fifth grade classroom.
Okay, so what do we do in this, when we get to junior high and high school?
Junior high and high school? We do not look at individual class periods in, in the, in the sense of, so our ratio that we, we use a ratio to calculate the number of teachers that are going to a campus. At secondary, it operates very different from elementary. So at secondary schools, students fill out a choice sheet. Schools get in the choice sheet and they say, okay, I've got 136 graders that need sixth grade English. And so then they divide those out and generally like if our, our ratio is one to 29 is how we calculated it, they'll put 30 in a room. Okay, how many sections of English do I need? So that tells me how many teachers I have to dedicate to sixth grade English. And then sometimes that teacher may do, like if it's one and a half, then I may need to do one teacher as sixth grade English and the other part of their day is seventh grade English. So as they do their, they build their master schedule in the system, then they will load the students and students will drop in based on their selections. But like PE classes at secondary will go up to 50 students. So that means that other classes go down. Then you have some classes who are 15 students, so that means other classes in that period are higher. So it, it's not, like we don't look for that number. What we look at is across, and we look at, at teacher course loads at secondary. So as a teacher, how many total students am I responsible for in my schedule? And on average, if you look at a six out of eight day with 30 students, on average, it's about 180. You're going to have some teachers that go way over that, like your PE teacher, but you're also going to have classes like CTE and those kind of things that are under. But we also have some compliance pieces with CTE. And depending on the specific course, due to safety issues, like if it's an automotive course or welding course, there is a limit to the number of students you can put into CTE courses. So those actually do have some limits. So it's not as, it's not as clean cut, but what we look at is like if a high school is 200 students under enrolled, you're going to see it across their master schedule. So then it could be that I'm combining, like if I'm going to lose a math teacher, then I combine my algebra ones and that kind of thing.
Okay. So I'm going to ask this question because this is where I get questions as a trustee, which is, my child's calculus class has 40 kids in it. So where should a parent who's having that reality go with that question?
The campus principal.
To the campus principal. Okay, that answers that for me. Thank you.
They can explain their master schedule and show them the master schedule. And it could be they have a calculus class, fourth period, that has 20 students, but that course didn't work in that child's schedule. But there may be other kids where it could. That's why we were going to, we ask the secondary principals to look across their teacher schedules to see, can you balance?
And if they can't?
Then you're going to have a large class, you know, you might have some small classes if, if the student schedules won't work.
So is there a number in a secondary level that we would say we're setting them up for maybe not the best academic situation? Meaning my child's class has 40 kids in it, that's not ideal for a calculus.
Yeah. So sometimes I think it depends on what's being taught. But the other thing in that kind of case, if you can't balance across a, a particular teacher, like let's say I can't balance this particular teacher's class, then what I would do is look at all my math teachers during that period. Because calculus isn't a separate certification, it's a math certification. So I would then look at all my math teachers. So I may have geometry classes that are low. So can I move geometry kids and that math teacher teach calculus and split that class? So, so secondary has more flexibility within their master schedule, just because of how certifications work and it's not a grade level specific type situation.
Got it.
Yeah.
And trustee Ashley, that's what I was about to say, while she may not look at it at that granular, granular level, the principals do, and they do have the flexibility if they so exercise it to make adjustments to provide more balance. And every principal, high school and middle school, we all have gone through it or go through it, you know, as you sit in that seat.
Yeah, yeah. And sometimes they, they make the, you know, they make choices for a variety of reasons.
Okay. That makes sense to me. And I'm going to stop talking and give my colleagues opportunity to ask questions.
Colleagues, other questions? Trustee Boazwell.
Thank you for all of this. You guys covered a lot of ground, so thank you for all of that. I want to start just by saying I appreciate the plan to make our campuses safe on Election Day. I know people, our community sees our schools as shared community spaces. I know on Election Day they are. I remember long ago, when I first moved back to Austin, going to vote at Brecker Woods, when you could just walk right in and vote in the cafeteria and there were children everywhere. And that is not the world we are living in. So I really appreciate a thoughtful plan to make this a permanent part of our culture. So thank you for that, Dr. Reach, talking about the appreciation of the safety election plan. So thank you for that. And just want to make a request while we're all here in the room together. Texas law allows 16 years, students who are 16 years old and up to work as paid election workers on Election Day. It's an excused absence other times, but it's, we should make sure that all of our high school principals are sharing that opportunity with our students. It's a great learning experience and a way to earn some significant money that day and, and really contribute to our community. So I can share a link to that. It's, it's easily available information, but a cool opportunity for a lot of our kids. And I know some of our students already do it and get an excused absence that, that day, but this is, yeah, a nice way to do that. Appreciate the accountability, really glad to see especially the growth, the closing of gaps. Very proud of our post-secondary success. I know we've done a lot of work and discussion about that and have so many rich opportunities in that. So just want to shout out about all of that. in that, so just want to shout out about all of that. And then have some questions about the student numbers and the staffing, Ms. Stevens. Looking at the gap between who is in our system and, and what we are looking at as our likely enrollment number, and then that daily count, is that typical, of a typical year? Are we seeing a larger gap than we normally would?
So, it is the first time that we've done this specific of a process, and so, I can't answer that specifically to previous years, but what we will see is, over the course of this week and next week, is that number will get closer. So, there is a point in time in the system where we drop no-shows. So, if a student has not been here for five days in a row, and, you know, the schools have, our IT department put together a plan and ways for schools to reach out to those students who have not been here, but if we get no response, there is a, a way in the system that when they have not been here at all, that, that we will drop those students. So, that number in the system will come down. On the other hand, as we get kids through registration, and registration means something very different for a pre-kinders student who were just waiting for the application at elementary, it's walk in and you get your class assignment, you go to that class. Whereas at secondary, what an enrolled student means is, we've done all that paperwork, but you're not an enrolled student until you actually are a course, you have a course schedule and you're scheduled in the system, which sometimes will take a little bit longer. So, our number will go up. So, you're going to see it start to come together. Now, will there ever be a perfect match? Probably not. And there, there's a wide range of reasons. There are schools who we take attendance for that we do not count for, for our enrollment for funding purposes and those kind of things. So, we have those schools as well.
Okay, thank you for that. So, I guess a related question is, how much should we worry? And how will you let us know whether to worry more or worry less as this comes into focus?
After next Friday, we will have a much better picture because we'll have done the no-show drops, we'll have gotten through, like, we know where we are sitting with early childhood, we know we'll have all the transfers done by then, all the secondary schools will have their students scheduled. So, literally that first ten days of school, it's really hard to be really, really specific because it does vary for, you know, just as the system moves.
Okay.
We, we did want to bring the information before you all today, so it's not a surprise because we're watching it on a day-to-day basis, and so, we know what we projected, but we also know what we're counting in the buildings every day. And so, today, for me, it was important that we at least, that you all know where we are right now.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mazem and Stevens, both, both for that. And I know you're keeping us updated with that daily count, but I would love a, you know, kind of a, some kind of narrative in the superintendent's update would be very helpful, just to help frame it for us would be extremely helpful. Because you guys have a better sense of how to read it and, and interpret it than we do based on what you're seeing campus to campus. So, thank you for that. I have a question about staffing and how the places where there aren't teachers or counselors or essential positions yet, TAs, how that is being communicated to families? I know there was at least one principal who had a meeting that I think families found extremely helpful, just the real transparency and reassurance, here's where every position stands, here are the ones we are, do have some more concern about, here, here are answers to your questions, what you might choose for your children. I know there was a Latin teacher that, that is apparently very difficult to staff and options, you know, kind of the, the menu was shared with families so they could make choices that worked for their students. So, you know, kind of how are we communicating this to families so they know what we know?
So, the one thing I know from the human capital side that's required by law is that on day thirty, if we don't have a certified teacher in the classroom, we do have to notify parents. And there is, there is a standard, there is a standard communication piece that we send out, and we'll, we'll, we send it out to principals, and then principals send it to like a particular classroom or that, you know, like if it's all the students that are enrolled in Latin or whatever, that we do have to provide that by law on, on day thirty.
Okay, and are principals being encouraged, or could principals be encouraged to share more information than that earlier than day thirty? It seems like families, this is not a secret to families when their students don't have a teacher, and I think that would be a, a good form of partnership, I would hope.
Trustee Boswell agreed. And it, it is not systematic, to be honest with you. Different principals do different things. I'll tell you that one way that you can communicate that in an elementary setting is at the meet-the-teacher night. When you go, if there's not a teacher there, then it's pretty obvious that there's something happening, and the principal will let you know then what the plan is. But that, that's, that's something that we can get even better at.
Okay, thank you very much. I know families were really reassured by the principal who, who I'm aware of, who had, took real leadership on that, and, and families were very reassured just by having knowledge. And I have a question about the District of Innovation change that you are bringing to us in September. Can you give us just an outline of what you'll be bringing, bringing to us?
Yeah, I might mess it up a little bit. I know Jacob's here, and I know Norma is probably upstairs. Is, when we brought it last time, it was very specific to CTE, math, and science at those areas. And what we did was, we asked the committee to broaden it. So, it's interesting, when we met with the District of Innovation group or team or the membership on that the very first time, they actually asked us, like, they even recommended we broaden it, and we're like, no, 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 we're good. And so, it's almost like, okay, we should have listened to the committee several months ago. But so, it's, it's broadened, so it will include all content areas and include elementary.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate the heads up on that. And just want to share trustee Anderson's concerns about counselors and mental health. And I know in working to get our balanced budget, I think there were some campus support, kind of crisis support positions, my understanding that we cut some things at central office too. And I just want to be sure that we really have what we need to support students, and, and if we don't have what we need, that maybe we consider some ESSR funds or something else that might help us fill those gaps. And I know there are some lawmakers who are interested, they understand there's a real need for more mental health support on campus, but I just want to be sure that we're being as thoughtful about that as we can.
And I'm going to rely on our counseling department to let us know if there's, if there's a need, okay, they're nodding their head, yes.
Thank you.
So, they would tell us if there's that, yeah.
Thank you. And then last is the elementary planning time in the essential areas, and, and I know we heard from teachers who appreciate the planning time. I think there's a, a shared commitment to more planning time. And I think we know from the presentations we've had and, and the communications we've had from the community, that there are places where I think it was easy to make this work well, and probably places where it's not working as well. And, and I think the question is just how we all work together to make sure teachers get the planning time they need, that our students are safe, and that we're hearing what's working and what's not, and being thankful, and being thoughtful about it. So, I appreciate the plan to really go get feedback and, and have a reality check about where it's, it's working. And I think if we go back to the safety question about the heat, for example, if you have a grade level of a hundred kids in a school with, you know, no outdoor water fountains, a water break is not that realistic. And if you have a grade level of, you know, seventy-five kindergarteners, anyone who has ever been near an elementary school lost and found knows that, you know, six-year-olds expecting them to keep track of their water bottles is not always a perfect solution either, including mine when they were that age. So, I just want to be sure we're being really thoughtful about when what we expect to happen on paper is matching that reality and, and where it is and where it isn't, and how we can make sure that, that we're being thoughtful about that. And I, I do think the heat is a real concern with, you know, maybe kids are out for sixty minutes or forty-five minutes, which I think we, we should talk about, whether that's reasonable this time of year. But also, that means an adult is probably out all day, several hours, even if they're sharing. And that we just need to, to, again, make sure our, what we think works on paper is working in the real world. And I would really appreciate, if we look at the number of vacancies for PETAs, I'm concerned that we, we certainly are going to have schools that are over the thirty that we promised. When we were talking about this during the budgeting, I'm concerned that we have schools that are over the forty-five to one ratio, and that does put us in violation, something we weren't in violation before of DEA rules, and now we perhaps are. And I would just love, and I know, Ms. Stevens, you said you don't have that data yet, but I would appreciate that. I would appreciate data about staffing, class size, injuries in PE classes. Anecdotally, I'm hearing about more injuries. And anecdotes are one thing, but data is another, and I, I know we have it, so I would just appreciate in our weekly updates, having a, a look at some key data about how it's working and how it's not, ahead of when we're really going and asking for that lived experience data as well. Because it's a big change, and I think if our commitment is really, we, we've allocated a great deal of money, enough to give every teacher a, a two percent raise to this, we, we are committed to the planning time and have really thoughtful, we've heard tonight, you know, kind of the thoughtful use that you expect to make of that, that we're setting it up for success and not creating a system that isn't going to accomplish what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Boswell. Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Lugo has a small question.
I've measured it, it's very tiny. Okay, so, I have a question about the special education vacancies. Can the administration kind of answer what, what's happening to those students that need that particular teacher resource, but the resource just isn't there?
Well, I mean, there are a number of different teachers that work with special ed kids, is the resource teachers, and there are the teachers in the programs. So, it just, each case is different. And so, say, I'll, I'll take a hypothetical case that if a school has, I, I'm thinking of one particular school that has a, a program for early childhood special education, but they only have one student in that particular classroom, but then they don't have a resource teacher at that particular school, then there's an opportunity to utilize that staff differently as they're still looking for the other position to be filled. So, it's about being creative and realistic at the same time on each individual campus and just using your resources the best way that you can. And so, the idea is to have every student be served and to, and to meet the IEP hours, for sure.
No, I definitely appreciate the idea. I think, you know, it's not a surprise that that doesn't happen, right? And so, I think that's where my question is coming from, is like, what, in those circumstances, you know, do parents receive information, like, you know, hey, for your particular student, we see an IEP is in place, you know, right now, we have substitute, it kind of, it's really the, the thread that I think I've been hearing pretty much all night, like, parent communication, parent involvement, rather than putting the onus on parents to come try to figure out how to get information from us, us being proactive. I mean, it's no, y'all don't got me on my soapbox. It's no surprise that parents are going to be upset when they find out my kiddo doesn't have a teacher in X class, or my kiddo, or my student, right? Because it's not just younger kids. My student doesn't have the teacher available to fulfill the IEP.
So, so one of the notes that I made is that we do want to communicate to parents where we have vacancies, and we don't want to wait for the thirty-day mark. And so, we'll take care of addressing that. I do think that we need to get through potentially this leveling process because we do feel like with our numbers, that a lot of the gaps that we see are going to be covered in the leveling process, and I know it's not a comfortable process for everybody, but, but it is one that we, we need to do to be able to meet these needs where we have them. But we will take care of addressing communication, because it shouldn't be a situation where a student is in special education, doesn't have their needs met, and we haven't shared that with a parent, I agree.
Yeah, and a lot of times, that's when rumors start. I mean, it just, it can go sideways really fast, and so, you know, what is it, nature hates a vacuum? And then the other question is, so I was thinking about the three days, y'all mentioned about administrators had, had three days together, there was a lot of positive outcomes from there. Help me understand, to what extent was dual language implementation provided, you know, as far as expectations, the vision, you know, reviewing the model, the dual language model closely, kind of providing supports with professional learning?
So, let me go, let me go backwards a little bit before I go forwards. So, the week of July, because I'm trying to remember what week we did what. It was the week of, Elizabeth, you may need to help me out here, because I, okay, so the, okay, July eighteenth, the week of July eighteenth, what we did that week was a two-day, and that was totally dedicated to special education. And then the week of the twenty-fifth were the topics that we covered. Dual language would be a topic, like in a principal's meeting or in leveled meetings, like when we have just elementary principals. I know they've covered some documentation about program implementation, because I have seen that in terms of the splits by grade level, you know, the expectations by grade level. As far as in-depth training, we have not done in-depth training on dual language. That was not, that was not one of the topics that we covered to the depth that we did special education this year.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate that answer.
Yes.
That's, that's the nugget that I was looking for.
Yes, we, yeah.
To, to that point, you know, dual language, similar to special education, is probably like, we're probably like a year behind where we need to be, right? We recognize it, and Kastas and I said it, I mean, and we've recently got our report, where we do have these structures that we need to put together to make sure that if we're going to roll out a dual language model, we got to provide opportunities for training, we got to provide training, necessary training for teachers that are in those classrooms, especially when administrators that are responsible for monitoring the implementation and the fidelity with which they move forward with that implementation, we have to train them. And so, we haven't done that, but know that we recognize that and that we're going to be doing it as we move forward.
So, first of all, it really, like, thank you, because sometimes I ask questions and I hear like.
No, we, we've really focused on special education.
Don't be messing with somebody who's worked for a bureaucratic organization. I know all the words, but thank you for just getting to that nugget, and also thank you for kind of sharing, you know, like, looking forward. Yes, it's not where we are today, but there are, you know, y'all are thinking about it, they're putting plans together, and I completely agree, you know, not just having the infrastructure and the systems in place, but also along that, building that culture of like dual language can work, right? Like, it really has positive impacts.
I do want to say, because we, we did share this even as we met with the, the dual language group that we were meeting with yesterday, a lot of times as we go about making these structural changes, it is going to be uncomfortable. So, that's just so as we think about climate and culture, we, we have to move somebody's cheese, we have to tear down somebody's fence to get where we're trying to go. And so, everybody within this room needs to be comfortable with that because that is uncomfortable for the people that are impacted, so just know that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustees, say.
Thank you so much for this, and thanks so much for this information, really appreciate it. I did want to share a little bit of what I heard from a principal, and, you know, I know we've been talking about staff vacancies, but there are also positions that I feel like maybe we don't even have them allotted, but there could be a need, and in particular, I'm thinking about school nurses. So, this came up recently, President Rodriguez and I actually were talking to some principals a couple of days ago, and one principal shared, I'll just read what she said. My safety concern is not, is not all campuses are, like, all campuses are not created equally. I have a nurse two days a week. Now, by having PE every day, you increase the possibility of an accident happening every day. With an empty gym, every kid would normally have ninety square feet. Now, it's less than thirty square feet, you know, and that's not even counting equipment, like having hula hoops and all that kind of stuff. And she was kind of joking, that's like, my kids can only get injured on like Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, or whatever, you know, like the day, or, you know, two days a week that a nurse is there. And so, I am really, I know the next topic is going to be about safety, but this is, I guess, also part of the school reopening, like, what is happening?
So, right now, so right now.
Help me understand.
Right, so right now, we do not hire school nurses. We contract, that's all, that's a contract service through Seton. I have been in districts where we have hired nurses, I mean, we've had nurses as employees. It would, it- mean, we've had nurses as employees. It is going to be another one that is a hard-to-fill area. It's just been my experience from other districts. And that's because what a school system pays is not anything close to what a nurse can make. And during the pandemic, I think, you know, we all recognize that even nurses' salaries have gone up significantly. So you have to find the right type of personnel that would want to be a nurse in a school setting, that maybe has young children, that wants our schedule. And so you can find them, but sometimes you sit with some vacancies and they're not all registered nurses either.
I appreciate, again, your straightforward answer. But yeah, and so do we have, like, I mean, it's two, as a nurse twice a week, kind of the average, is it equal among school? Like, is it equitable? I gotta wonder.
Who knows? I don't know about the nurse contract. I will be honest.
I mean, I'm happy for this to be sent to me later. I don't want to get too off-topic.
Yeah.
But you know, but that's yet another concern with, I'm sorry, the essential areas design, you know, where I'm going with this. But I'm just kind of seeing like, I'm not going to be surprised if in a couple of weeks I get an urgent email saying, blank elementary school, something has happened. And I really want us all to just go there mentally. What are we going to think about and feel when we do hear of somebody becoming ill because they're out in the heat? And then what could we have done to prevent that? Kind of like we did with COVID. I think we did such a good job of anticipating the worst and putting structures in place. And I would hope that we, as a district, would learn from that because I don't see that happening right now with what we're doing. And so nurses is just yet another area of concern.
Okay, thank you.
The concerns around heat have been noted, and I think they will continue to have the conversation around how we go about making adjustments to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. Trustees, any other questions?
I just had one, one question it is for Leslie. So I'm so sorry. I just wanted, well, it can probably be answered by other folks as well. When you gave the number of 74,000 and some odd hundred and 72,000, that was the apples-to-apples comparison on enrollment?
So what 74,713 is, is what we built our budget for, for this year. So what we did was we allocated staff anticipating 74,713 students. The other number that I haven't done is 74,000,
482.
482 is what is currently in what we call our student information system. So at the end of July, all the kids that were in there last year, unless they withdrew, rolled over, and then we've added new ones and withdrawn any that have withdrawn.
Got it. And so
The apples-to-apples comparison was 21, 22 school years, 72,655.
Right. Okay. So that's what I wanted to understand. That was the apples-to-apples because you then
None of mine is apples-to-apples.
Right. Okay. So we're actually up a tick in the apples-to-apples. So there's a likelihood that that could hold and we might be up a tick or kind of new. No, 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 we're really low. So when I heard the 66,000, I was, that's what I needed to, okay. I was, well, you tragically straightened out what I was trying to
I'm sorry, my straightforwardness didn't work on this.
Trustee Foster, I do think part of what we were up on is ensuring that students were registered early. Traditionally, a lot of registration happened that first week of school. And our engagement office worked really hard to do that registration earlier, which has helped us with these numbers. And it has helped us really focus on pre-K, which to the best of our ability, we still need to find better ways to register pre-K early. But that's what they're spending a lot of time on this week, is registering pre-K kids. And that's why we said that we still have about 1,000 pre-K students to process.
Got it. So I heard a number of 66 and some odd, and then we've got some stuff out there.
We have so potential for work in the next seven days.
Thanks for the clarity or thanks for clearing up my failure to listen well. Thanks.
So again, we didn't want any surprises. So that way, yeah, we wanted to make sure that number was out there.
Trustees, other questions?
I think as we close this, I just have one comment. Dr. Mays, I just want to thank you and your team for all their hard work. You know, August 11th, we voted for, to call the $2.4 billion bond package, but that's not the only thing that your team has been focused on. They've been focused on reducing the teacher shortage down from 1,000 openings to 160. Obviously, you're hearing some of the concerns around essential areas as well, but I appreciate y'all's ability to, I forgot what the word is, they chew gum and walk at the same time, as they say. So I really appreciate the focus of the administration and listening to the board and to the concerns tonight. So thank y'all and to the administration, to the team. We're going to move on, colleagues, to our next item, which is an update on school safety. And as y'all may know by state law, the board president serves as one of the co-chairs of the District Safety and Security Committee. And I would encourage interested community members to join the open community committee meetings and consider joining, as there are currently a few openings for new members of the District Safety and Security Committee. More information can be found at austinisd.org/ advisory-bodies/sssc. So, Dr. Mays?
Sure. Again, thank you, trustees. The next item, as we shared, we do have a focus on safety as we move into this year. And here's, the team will be sharing an update. And so you have tonight, of course, our new chief of AISD police, Wayne Sneed, Dr. Twyla Williams, and Dr. Jacob Reed. Yeah, y'all can go ahead and clap it up. So they've been hard at work with, again, helping us to put in systems to help keep us safe. And so they'll be sharing some of those systems.
Thank you, interim superintendent Mays, President Rodriguez, board of trustees. So tonight, we do want to share with our board and with our community, some of the things that we're doing to ensure safety prior to the schools, prior to the start of school and ongoing through the school year. We recognize and what we've learned through recent tragedies and through research that have come out of that, is that two things that we can do as a district to really help support safety of our students and safety of our staff is ensuring exterior door safety and knowledgeable staff, students and families, and what our safety procedures are. And we believe that this is really connected with the mental health for our students and staff as well. You know, we don't want barbed wire on fences. We don't want everyone walking through multiple levels of metal detectors because we know that that doesn't really make that incremental difference for safety. But having knowledgeable staff, knowledgeable students and families, having exterior safety features, and having strong mental health supports and strong police support is really what's going to make the difference. So this summer, Austin ISD spent some time going through some new requirements from the state. And that includes a partial safety audit that all of our campuses conducted, exterior door safety checks that every campus in every building, including the building that we're in right now, conducted. And then we also had a meeting which occurred last week with our safety and security committee, so that we could get feedback with them on the district's multi-hazard emergency operation plan, active threat plan. And then we also did a tabletop exercise with them to go through how we respond to these types of emergencies. So the work that we're still going through and that we started in July, still going on, is ensuring that our campus staff and principals are well-trained in our safety protocols and procedures, and also ensuring that our substitutes are well-trained in this. Because we recognize that that's one issue that really needs to be addressed, that when subs come on campus, that they're aware of what the drills are, where they go in an emergency, how they lock their door, how they have access to their door. You know, many times, subs have to rely on students when a drill occurs while they're there. And we want to ensure that they have this knowledge up front so that that's really accounted for as well. We are also working with our campuses. Prior to the start of school, they scheduled all their drills. We're now working with them to make sure that that's entered into the system, that staff are aware on when they're occurring, and that we have methods for sharing that information out. And then we're also working on new access control procedures, which include weekly checks of all of our campuses. And I'll touch on that in a moment. So I want to start with the summer targeted audits. And this was a big part for our campuses. And really, it was about assessing, excuse me, assessing the current campus safety and what is going on at that campus. So campuses were asked to identify some of the actions that they already have in place, including how do they let visitors into the building? Where do they go? What's the flow of that? What is the requirements on ensuring that all doors are locked for the classroom, which is the requirement? But what about our other doors? Portables was a big part of this, ensuring portable safety. We recognize that what we would like to see, well, let me, first of all, what we'd like to see is students in the building. But when we do have portables, we want to ensure that those portables are also secure, whether that be with a fence and some type of gate, or strong safety features on those portables. And then, of course, we also recognize the important part that monitoring and cameras play, something that we've been addressing through bond work, through grants provided through the governor's office and through additional funding for safety and security from TEA. And then again, of course, school-based law enforcement and training, which Chief Sneed is going to touch on, our mental health work, and getting ready for drills. So before I go on to the next slide, I want to share a quick story with Mr. Bryan. And this was a trip to Norman Sims, which Trustee Boswell was there as well, but she didn't enter in with me. So when I visit campuses, I had not been to the new Norman Sims. I'd been to Norman, been to Sims, not the new Norman Sims. So I did not know where the main entrance was in the new building. So when I approached, I just parked in the first parking lot I saw. And I was getting ready to come in, what was the side of the building. Mr. Bryan was out there preparing some items outside and cleaning those sidewalks. And he said, oh, are you here for the tours? And I said, yes, sir, I am. And he said, well, they're going in through the front office. So you can, you can either drive around to the front, or you can walk around up here. And I said, oh, no, it's okay. I'm with Central, I said, it's okay. Like, I'm just going to go in over here. He said, oh, I'm sorry, I can't let you in over here. I said, no, no, it's all right. I'm from Central Office. He goes, no, I'm not going to fall for that. You can go to the front of the building and you can enter in over there. So as you can see, Mr. Bryan here in his Dallas Cowboys shirt. Mr. Bryan has worked at Norman for over 25 years. He's worked at Austin ISD for almost 37 years. When I went to meet with him to thank him, first to apologize to him for not saying right away, yes, sir, I will head over to that front door. And I did tell him that that was on me and that should have been my first response. But then I wanted to thank him for everything that he did. And while we were talking, first, he kept looking over my shoulder. And he goes, and why, I was telling him on how glad I was that he's keeping, you know, getting this building ready and what's he excited about? He goes, he goes, I don't know why that person's here. And so he was watching at all times and he was ready. And then he also shared a story with me, right after we took this picture, that he has a colleague that takes the bus home. And he says the colleague doesn't know this. Hopefully, they're not listening in on the board meeting. Although I told Mr. Bryan to watch him for this portion. He said that his colleague takes the bus home. And obviously, when the time changes, many times, the colleague has to go wait at the bus stop in the dark. So he said that he'll go stand in the office, because there's a window that looks at the bus stop. And he can see her while she's out there. And there's a door right there, so that if anything occurs, he can get out there quickly. And he'll sit there and wait until the bus comes and picks her up. And so Mr. Bryan is the type of staff who really puts safety of our staff and students first in preparing them, knowing what an important role that plays. We need many more Mr. Bryans here in Austin ISD, and we have many like that.
Mr. Reed, I want to point a pro, just interrupt you to say, I know Mr. Bryan because I've received the same treatment.
I am glad to hear that. So yeah, if you, if anyone else goes out there, you know, first off, don't go through the side door. Go to the front. But say hello to Mr. Bryan. And he cares so much about those kids and that staff and that community at Norman Sims.
And if I may, Dr. Reed, thank you for clarifying that I did not try to go in the side door with you.
No, Trustee Boswell went to the front door. She did exactly what she was supposed to do. So the other part of what we've been working on this summer is an exterior door audit. I was able to join 12 of our campuses for these audits, but every campus took part in this, either a principal or an AP, walked to every single exterior door and tested the door on multiple features. And what we were looking for were five different enhanced safety features. And you can see them here. And that includes a sturdy Mulan, which is the metal divider that you can remove. And that way, you can bring in pallets, or you can put it back in there. And it provides that extra security of not being able to force double doors open as easily. It'd be very hard to get it open at that point. The reinforced door frames, which is just the extra addition of some type of metal or steel around the door. The auto door close, which is one of the most common features that we found in our doors. And you can see them, those right there. So we know that many times when students are in a hurry, they're not always turning around to make sure they close that door. So we want to ensure that we have doors that automatically close all the way. So that's not something that our students need to worry about. And then the auto door lock, very common and associated with that one. You see two different versions. And the one that I have a picture of here is the more common and the one we want to see, the push bar. And then it automatically clicks locked, closed. So again, students, staff don't have to worry and test the door. We just know that it's safe and secure once it closes. And then that emergency open, which is that push bar that I just mentioned. That's also important because, you know, with traditional locks, in the event of an emergency, someone has to ensure, well, is this locked? Do I need to turn it? How much do I need to turn it? Like, do I need a key? But with the emergency open, it's just the push and it comes open. So you're not worried with a handle. You can do it with your back in case of an event of a fire, and you don't need to be close to something hot. So we want to see those items. Overall, out of these, and then there's a sixth, which is like the garage door opening, which aren't as common, but we do have some in the district. And all of those also lock. So out of those five, just about 99% of all of our exterior doors had at least one of these. And then the thing that we also looked at is, are all these functional? And you can see here that I've given a district-wide summary because we want to be careful to not identify any weak points that could be at our campuses. But I still wanted to be able to share information with our board and the public. So what we're doing when we're finding items that were not operational, we prioritize those in our work order systems. And Mr. Segura and his team created a special indicator. So they knew that this had to do with an exterior issue. So to the greatest extent possible, we could address it before school opened or immediately, you know, during this week and next. So that's our number one priority around the safety fixes, is making sure that all those items are operational. We also want to follow up on those other doors. I want to clarify, all of them have locks. We don't have any doors that just can swing open and close with, you know, with nothing associated with them. We just don't consider the lock an enhanced safety feature, but it is still a safety feature. So we want to start following up on those doors. You know, that's more of a, in many cases, capital investments needed to ensure that we have all of these safety features that we want to see. But we want to make sure that every door has at least one. And then we're also going to start working on our weekly access control checks. So we did this as part of an audit where we went through every door. We checked them really carefully. But through the year, we're asking our campuses to do a outside walk and just check those doors again. Make sure that all those features that we know that we have, that they're still working in the order we expect, and that where we expect something to be fixed, that it was fixed, and that they're reporting out on that so that we have updated information. And that'll happen every week. We're also asking our school leadership team and our emergency operations team to talk about, to talk about that with campuses when they go out to visit, to ask them, could you share with me your records on the access controls? Have you had any concerns? When's your next one planned? Could I join you for it? And help the campuses with that work. So another item that's a new requirement from the state of Texas that's gained a lot of news is what the state called random intrusion drills. And it's really not a great name because they did come back and clarify that they're not trying to intrude into a building. And we were able to take part in a training just this Monday, I apologize, just this Tuesday, that provided some additional information on what we would expect during these. So the state did clarify that they expect to visit every district every semester and conduct at least one of these drills at that district. But for larger districts, they expect to do multiple drills. So we expect that both in the fall and the spring, they will visit Austin ISD schools, and they will visit some number of schools to conduct these drills. We know that the Texas State Safety and Security, which is a part of the Texas State University Department, is a part of their Department, School Safety Center. Thank you. is a part of their Department School Safety Center, thank you, will be the one conducting these drills. They will call a district and say, "Next month, we are visiting your district." And that is the pre-warning that we will receive. We won't know what campuses, and we won't know what day. When they show up, they've told us that they'll be in plainclothes. You know, they will not be wearing camo, they won't have a hood over, they won't be dressed in all black, they'll be dressed in plainclothes dress coming up. They will walk up to the front door, and two other doors in addition to the front door, and they'll just try to see if they can open up the door and walk in. What we also learned is that it's very likely that if students are exiting the door, they may ask a student, "Will you let me in?", to see if the student will let them into the door. If they do get in that way, the first thing that they'll do is they'll go to the office. They'll let them know that they're here for their safety inspection, the intrusion inspection, and that they want to speak with one of the administrators to join them from this walk. They'll also allow the campus to call Central Office, to see if Central Office can join. And Mr. Segura, myself, and our ISD police are going to do our best to make ourselves available, so that we can immediately come join for that, and help our campuses during those walkthroughs. If they were not able to get in, then they'll use whatever method we have, which for us is the call boxes. And they'll then come back in. And then they'll tell the principal that, "I was not able to find a way in, so I had to use the call box." They'll then conduct the audit, walking around, checking locked doors, and checking these safety features. They'll also ensure that there's not broken windows or doors, there's not holes in the wall. And they will also check to see if classroom doors are locked. They will not check every door, and they're going to do their best to not interrupt any classroom that has instruction going on. Now, that's assuming that they can tell what's going on. But with the principal there, we hope that we can say, you know, "Here's a set of classrooms to come check." Once they leave, they will provide a report on what concerns they may have seen. They'll provide that to the superintendent. And they'll ask the superintendent to address those concerns within, I believe it's 45 days, 45 days. That also includes the campus, the principal working with their campus to share, "Here's the results, and here's our next steps." And also, the District Safety and Security Committee will need to meet to review those results. So if, for some reason, changes were not made from that corrective action within 45 days, they reserve the right to report to the district to TEA, where TEA could take some action. They also shared that it will be their intention to do a follow-up if they see any major concerns. So if they see a door that's simply not working, they may come back within that 45 days and check again just what they found concerns on. So for the next steps for the district, as I said, we want to continue to prioritize our work orders around locks, doors, and existing cameras. So when we have cameras that aren't pointed at the front door or are turned off, that's a replacement we can make, because we have those cameras available. The wiring and the power is already there. We also know that we need to identify, that we've already been starting to identify areas for new cameras that really are needed. And new improvements to doors, our card readers, and fencing around campuses. And that's kind of our next step. So we want to prioritize the locks, doors, and existing cameras, then look at some of our next steps on new door safety features, new cameras, fencing, and card readers. We're going to continue our weekly access check, work with our executive directors and our emergency management team to help us with training on that. And then doing our training for teachers and students. And this is feedback that we heard from our Safety and Security Committee, is that they thought it was great that we're working to train teachers, but they wanted to make sure that we're also prioritizing training students on our safety procedures as well. So I will pause there, and I want to talk about, or I want to pass it on to just as important steps for safety, and that's our mental health.
Good evening, Dr. Mays, President Rodriguez, and Board of Trustees again. I saw this quote from the American School Counsel Association, and I'll just read it briefly. "Efforts to improve school climate, safety, and learning are not separate endeavors. They must be designed, funded, and implemented as a comprehensive, school-wide approach that facilitates interdisciplinary collaboration and builds a multi-tiered system of supports." I'd like to begin this portion of the presentation giving honor to every school counselor in Austin ISD. And also to our licensed mental health professionals, our district social workers, also known as our crisis response team. Thank you. When we talk about safety as it relates to mental health, we often hear a term, counselor's role in identifying early warning signs. But rather than seeing it as early warning signs, we in Austin ISD see it as identifying the needs of students, and putting a plan in place to address the needs before it gets to an early warning sign. And so when we think about the mental health of all of our students and our staff on our campuses, we approach it with a multi-tiered system of support. We approach it knowing that the ownership of mental health, mental wellness, belongs to all of us. It belongs to everyone on the campus, and we have a responsibility. We do recognize that counselors are the heart of the school, and that counselors also are the foundation for that mental health expertise. Next slide. So when we think about the role of the counselor and the licensed mental health professionals, we think about how we address it in a multi-tiered system of support. And when we think about the tiers of support, we're talking about the needs that students may present themselves. And it may come across with different behaviors, different diagnoses. And we collaborate with other departments, such as our police department. We collaborate with health services when it comes to acute care. So starting with the tier-one needs, it addresses the services that are made available to all students. This looks like classroom lessons. This looks like morning meetings. This may look like mini check-ins with each individual student, which we have tasked all of our counselors to do, to meet with each one of their students. As we visited campuses this week, we were very, very pleasantly thrilled to see that teachers were building connections with students. It wasn't just a, "Okay, get your work out, let's do this work." But they were having circles, they were facilitating circles. There were SEL and CPNI activities going on. There were counselors checking in to make sure that those things were happening. And so when we look at mental health and school safety, we see it as a school-wide opportunity. Because from that tier-one support is how we identify students that need more additional support, which may move to a tier-two support. And the way we identify this, we have mental health meetings, we have child study team meetings, and basically, there are staffings about students who may present needs, so that we can decide, do we need to partner with outside agencies? Do we need to have the crisis prevention and intervention protocol? And so as we move up the tiers, this may include needing to have small groups, or needing to have individual counseling, and still going with our community partners, wraparound services, coordinate with community partners. We also want to make sure that we are providing, that provide social, emotional, mental health training to parents, so that they understand what their students are dealing with, and partnering with parents as an important role in what we're doing. And sometimes, we realize that when we've done all that we can do, when we've put everything in place that we can, when we've provided the support, it's still not enough. And we have to look at those tier-four supports, where it may get into the imminent safety or intensive needs. And that is when sometimes, we have to get involved, get our SROs involved to help us with that. We build those connections with them, because they're able to make calls to hospitals to check and see, is there a bed, if a student needs a bed, if they make an outcry, or if they actually make an attempt. We coordinate with our mobile crisis outreach services, which is a part of integral care. So we do all of these things, and then we have people in place, our licensed mental health professionals are in place, that as these students are transitioning from the school to the hospitals, back to the schools, and back to a normalized day, that we have safety meetings in place to make sure that there are supports in place. And again, this is not something that we do as a silo. This is something that we do as a very organized, very strategic, and intentional method of working with all parties that are involved. And so that is a snippet of what we do for school, mental health, and school safety.
Good evening, Dr. Mays, President Rodriguez, and our trustees. Wanted to first start off in recognizing the importance of this relationship. When I started with AISD in 2012, and I was asked to take over the mental health unit and supervise it, one of the first things I realized is the importance of having that coordinated effort and approach to mental health. I got the commitment of the chief at the time that we were going to build this as one of the best mental health units in the state. And I think that we've done that. So one of the things that we did is committed to training, and making sure that police were used when police were needed, and not used in the way that we were being used at the time I took over the unit. We reformed our processes, we invested in training. As you can see, that's depicted here. The state requires school-based law enforcement to have the two tops, number one and number two, which is school-based law enforcement and crisis intervention. We have vested, and continue to invest every year, to ensure that all of our officers are mental health-trained, they understand crisis protocol. And we have invested, as you can see down on the bottom, one, two, and three. This is additional training that's not required by the state, but it's required by our department, because we realize the importance of what it is that we do. We are also part of the crisis response team, and has teamed up with Dr. Williams, Dr. Wilson, Dr. Ross, and her team, in understanding that social, emotional support and counseling is a very essential part of what we do. So this past summer, what we did is, we invested in a multitude of trainings for all our officers. That training consisted of sexual assault investigations, mental health signs and symptoms of disorders, working with children with special needs, because we realized that that was a lot of the calls that we were receiving, and understanding where the lines were, and what the legislature expected of us as far as drawing the boundaries, behavior versus a safety issue, and being able to delineate those two things. We also worked with verbal de-escalation. We invest a lot of time in officers understanding how to de-escalate. We get a lot of training in the police academy with things on our hips. But this one, and this thing, is the two things that they do not train in the police academy. And so we've vested a lot of time and effort in preparing officers in verbal de-escalation. We also did autism awareness, and extensive training on autism. Suicide and crisis intervention prevention, which is what Dr. Williams alluded to earlier, and officers knowing our protocol, and when they're supposed to get involved at the tier-four level, not in one through three, unless there are some extenuating circumstances that creates an imminent danger for that person. Then we have our child and adolescent brain development, helping them to understand why kids act the way they act. Because that's a real important part. And one of the key parts that we use is, our expectations that a 12-year-old acts like we're acting at 25 or 26 years of age. They're not capable of doing so, because they're not 25 or 26 years of age. Then, of course, we had, NAMI came in, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, one of our other partners, and worked with us on training on consumer and family perspectives. They brought consumers in to talk about their life struggles with mental health, and how their interaction with police, and what impact that interaction caused. But also, the family perspective sharing from a father who talked about his daughter and all her encounters with law enforcement. I think she had over 30 encounters with law enforcement during her journey. And then we talked about de-institutialization and jail diversion, and creating programs within our criminal justice system to avoid arrest, and things along those lines. So, and then we went into substance abuse and corollary disasters, because we're noticing a lot of kids getting into vaping and THC, that's all those things that are going along with that. And then lastly, but no less important, is homelessness. And kids, understanding that some kids that come to our campuses are homeless, right? They come to school hungry, and that's why they're agitated. So those are just some of the topics that we covered this summer, and we cover each summer with our staff.
Thank you all. And so you can see, it's a combination, it's a team, a total team effort. It's not just hardening the schools, it's the mental health piece, it's the policing piece. And so with that combination, we feel like, you know, there's a layer, several layers of, you know, safety for our students. So that is the end of our report.
May I add something?
Sure, of course.
The police department works as a liaison between our mental health authority and our other stake, mental health community stakeholders. So as Dr. Williams pointed out, when there is an issue, and there's need for information that may not be contained within our school, our integral care has shared, during a crisis, they will share information about a student that may be beneficial in us making a determination whether hospitalization is necessary or not. So that partnership outside of AISD is real important. Wanted to make sure I didn't miss that part.
Thank you all.
Great, thank you. Trustees, sing.
I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate both Dr. Williams and Chief Sneed. I took pictures of you to send to your mama. But, Dr. Williams, I just want to thank you, because I have actually used you on a weekend, as you may recall, when there was a crisis that was happening with one of my kid's friends. And I called Jacob, and I was like, "I don't know what to do." And he was like, "Talk to Dr. Williams." And, but it really was, because I had my parent hat on, but my trustee hat on too, and I wasn't quite sure, like, what my role should be. So thank you to both of you for helping me through a difficult weekend. And thank you to Chief Sneed, because I think you're going to really, in this role, shine, and you're going to help our district be better, and really redefine, in the eyes of a lot of people, what a school-based police department can do and be. And I think tonight was just evidence of that, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Boswell?
I just want to share our appreciation as well for really the deep commitment to seeing children as children, even when they're big children. And to really making sure that we're taking care of the whole child while they're in our schools, and while they're here to learn and grow, and starting with people as people, and that deep commitment. It's a big investment. And I don't think our community is aware of all of the thoughtful work that goes into it, on the counseling side and the policing side. And just to start with mental health and child development, and starting there is really powerful, and just thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustees?
So, welcome, Chief. And Dr. Williams, good to see you again. There are so many areas in education, or heck, in our complex society, where on one hand, it's really difficult to get it right, because there's a complexity. But on the other hand, there is expertise out there, and there are proven methods. And this has been actually one of my favorite presentations in a long time. And this is coming from someone who has been a decades-long critic of policing and the way we do it in this country. And I've seen and experienced, in our schools, in the AISD schools, I've seen it done horribly. And I've absolutely seen it done expertly. Chief Sneed, when it was lieutenant, sorry, a couple ranks ago, a couple ranks ago, you know, I don't know if I was riding along with you, or I don't remember what the circumstances were. But I've actually seen you engage, and I've absolutely, and actually seen you de-escalate in situations where I've seen other people just get, like, beat down by officers. And I, you know, I've seen you turn situations around. One of the practices that happens in law enforcement is that they'll be often, so here's dispatch, here's things going on, and here are folks monitoring. And you will have somebody up the chain, who is seasoned, who is a veteran, who has expertise. expertise, and you can hear from the exchange that maybe there's going to be an inappropriate response. And the senior officer will step in and say, you know what, stand down, I'm gonna go ahead and handle it. On one hand, I love when I hear that because I hear evidence of the, uh, the chain correcting things before they go south, but I also worry in those same moments about the distribution of, uh, expertise and that there won't always be someone up the chain able to intervene in, in the moment. So, uh, I would like to hear from you a little bit about the distribution of expertise among our officers. Um, are we there yet? Or do we have a ways to go? And if we have a ways to go, how are we gonna get there? And what are the mitigants? How do we mitigate in the meantime? Boy, that was a lot. But you see where I'm at, you see what I'm getting at?
Yes, sir. And thank you for your question. Uh, we've, we've invested a lot of energy. We have a very young police department overall. Um, we bring in a lot of officers straight out of the police academy and we have to kind of teach them how you police in schools. There have been very quick studies. One of the things I did not, and I failed to add earlier, is we spent an entire day, eight hours of going through scenarios, scenarios that actually happened in our district. Uh, and we had about twenty-five different scenarios and they worked in groups to say how they would handle it. And not only did that, we required that they give a law that supported why they did something or why they didn't do, uh, take an action. And I, after we'd gone through the laws, they were supposed to know exactly what those laws were. Um, and then, uh, part of that was teaching them how to look out for each other, not just supervisors, but officers. Uh, and one of my favorite phrases that I use in teaching police officers is call Sergeant Coffee. And the, what that means is that you've gotten to a point where another officer recognized that you need to take a break. So it is a very professional way of communicating to the other officer and I hate to use the Minnesota situation, but that was a great opportunity for somebody to say, you need to call Sergeant Coffee. Right? And, uh, so it's a cue to each other, not necessarily from a supervisor, but it could be peer-to-peer, uh, that they're too deeply engaged emotionally in whatever is going on and they really need to step away from it. So these are the beginning steps that we've taken. And in answer to your question, are we there yet? I don't know if we ever get there, but we are not going to stop preparing and training for those situations because when you're dealing with human beings and you're dealing with emotions, things happen and they happen very quickly and you gotta make really quick decisions. And so there's always room for error. But I think that we're, we, we're at a point right now with what we've invested in our, in our officers, that they have a good basis to start from. And then we'll keep billing on it, year after year after year. This training will never go away. This will be every summer as long as I'm chief. It will be, uh, an intricate part of our training process because it's an intricate part of what we do, uh, in dealing with child and adolescent brain development. And if we're not vesting that time, then we're missing an opportunity.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have more to say, but last time I talked policing from the dais, the mail I got was enough. So I'll, I'll continue any, uh, additional, uh, conversations because I do have additional, uh, thoughts, but I really do appreciate, um, the work. And, uh, another thing that I appreciate about this presentation is its balance. It, and, you know, I, I, I was looking on our little monitor here of, you know, seventeen ways to like close a door or, or whatever and all, all that stuff, right? And I don't mean to belittle it, but when you look at it, it looks like, wow, we're really doing something here because these doors can't do this or do do this. And, and that's great, like really great and really important. And in the scheme of things, what is really, really important is the disposition of all of our kids and all of our families and all the people in our communities. And we can only control what we can control, but if from the ways in which we protect and serve, to the ways in which we provide counseling, to the ways in which we communicate with families, we are building up cultures of love and cultures of looking out for each other and ha, uh, you know, we, we've had, uh, you know, we had at the University of Texas, of course, the Whitman shooting way back in the Vietnam era, but in our more recent years, we've had two deaths on campus and that were really pretty horrific. some of my students who were tangentially involved, uh, still a year or two later were dealing with, I should have said, I should have known, and they shouldn't have. They were, you know, they're nineteen, they're twenty, they were doing the best that they could, but there were signs out there. And, uh, no failure of the students and really almost not a failure of the system because it's such high-level work that we wanted to see. But part of what we've had to do at the University of Texas is spend a lot of investment in, even in our classrooms, to build up a culture where we talk to each other and where we share what's going on. And even terroristic threats in A I S D, we know that there is value in a kid saying, I'm worried about this. The other side of it is that it's really delicate work and that we're not trying to, uh, have this be something that becomes, um, ways that people got you one another, um, that it be something that's always done out of love, that's always done out of care. It's really hard work, I guess, is what, what I'm saying. And I appreciate where we're going as a district and I share Trustee Boswell. I, I, I feel like Austin at its best always provides a national model. My aspiration for us is that we be the national model in school safety and that we do it in a particular Austin way, which is to have people understand it's about transformational work where we understand the world differently. It's not about how thick the concrete is. It's about having such a healthy space where these things become as close to impossible as po, uh, as possible. Um, and I apologize, I guess, for the, for the soliloquy, but if we don't get this right, we can't get our next piece right, which is teaching and learning and, you know, the, the outcomes we want to see. Uh, I appreciate you all so deeply and I support you all so deeply, um, including counseling people out of the profession if they're not gonna be good enough for us. But on the other side of the ledger, uh, lifting up pu, the, the policing that's done by I S D police departments, better pay for y'alls, more respect for y'alls, lifting up the idea of this protection and service being sacred and it being different and it being special and it being part of a special mission so that as we recruit new officers, we are getting the officers that have an eye to child development and see this as a special calling. So we have work to do also in messaging, in recruitment, so that we recruit the right officers on the front end. So, um, again, just thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions? Dr. Reese, thank you. Uh, Dr. Williams, thank you for serving as the co-chair on the Safety and Security Committee. And Chief Snead has, uh, survived his first presentation to the board. Welcome again, congratulations. Our last item under information reports and updates is policy B E local board meetings. I just kinda wanna walk you through this a little bit, trustees. This, this continues a commitment we made as a board back in two thousand and twenty to review and revise our own board processes. And the board started the discussion in the fall of two thousand and twenty and agreed to a first set of changes in December of two thousand and twenty. Additional changes we reviewed and approved in May of two thousand and twenty-one, along with an agreement to trial these new changes and engage in continuous improvement of what worked and what did not. The board continued that discussion with A J. Crable and a new draft was shared by Mr. Crable in February of two thousand and twenty-two, which is included in the agenda tonight as attachment one. The board discussed this and agreed further discussion was necessary. In June of two thousand and twenty-two, a request was made to consider changes to the policy by Trustee Singh. And tonight we have a copy of those changes. Trustee Singh and I had discussed potential changes and agreed on a set of changes that incorporates necessary clarity and timelines for those involved. And we'd like to hear feedback from our colleagues on those changes. And then Trustee Singh, you, you should share two additional changes. One was which would, uh, one was about providing a process for adding a new agenda item if three trustees request it following the process described in the policy. And then two, uh, we would allow any trustee to remove an item from consent during the meeting. And so, um, those, that's the information we shared. I don't know, um, I wanna recognize probably Trustee Singh to just make sure if you wanna add some additional, um, comments. And then I'd open it up for questions to our board members.
I think, um, I thought that the only difference was the consent piece and so now I'm looking for the part about the three trustees. So are you, and the version that you and I developed together, did that not have the th, part that three trustees need to request?
Well, we, we agreed on everything but those two parts. That one part, as we had discussions, and it wasn't a, I shouldn't say agreed, because well, you and I discussed them, but these are two that I think the board needed to kinda give their input on. So one, one of them, just to kinda walk this a little bit more, um, one of them was to provide a process of, let's say, a new agenda item comes on. I don't know, I'd welcome Dr. Reese to come talk as well because we had, we had had conversations with administration as well. So one item was if there is a agenda item that a trustee wants to put on the agenda, we currently send that to the gov, to the governance committee, to the board officers to determine whether it's an individual meeting, a small group meeting, or whether it needs to go to one of the, the committees that we have for us. The change that was suggested in the, in the policy was that if we had three trustees request it and that be, that it be put in the committee, I'm sorry, that it be put in the agenda, that, that that gets put in the agenda. And so that was the, the question. I don't know, Dr. Reese, if you have any additional clarification for us on that one? Because we can take one and then the other first, because I think that's, that's probably the best.
Sure.
If the board doesn't mind, the, the first set, I think is just clarity around all this. And so, and you all can provide feedback from now until the board voting meeting. I think the ones that we wanted to spend a little bit of time as a board are those two. One, are you all comfortable with changing it to say if three trustees ask for it to be on the, on the agenda, it goes automatically on the agenda or not? And I just wanna make sure, I'll pause here for a second to clarify that.
President Rodriguez, I think the, the main difference between the draft that A J. Crable presented and that one is that he uses the word that it, that it may be eligible to be placed on the agenda.
Yeah.
And the discussion was that that would still be a decision of the board officers. And, uh, I believe that the other draft, it would just be an automatic, a, after the other processes had run its course. I believe that there's three or four steps that happen first.
Yeah.
And then if those have run through, um, and it was still requested, then it would just automatically go.
Yeah. And I think that was, that was the issue of the may, mayor, it's the, it's, it's always the question, right? May or shall? And so one is may and the other one is shall. And I think the only, I think the question, I, I think from a governance perspective is making sure that we're not having all these issues that kinda pile up on us and it's like, oh, now they're required to, especially given the, uh, direct feedback to the board officers about timeliness of our board meetings and how, what time we, we leave. And so the idea was to make sure that we had that process and then have, and have the discussion of, well, do you all wanna try that out or do you wanna see where it goes? Or I don't, I don't think you wanna.
Well, I think that's what we're doing. I mean, I think that was part of the reason for this, um, the edits on the version that's entitled, that's titled "Saying" was an attempt to model what we are doing because that is what we do. And, um, if you look up top where it says special or emergency meetings, it's on the first page, it takes three trustees to call an emergency meeting, you know, and so.
And there's a definition of what emergency.
Correct. And so that is an emergency or urgent public necessity. Um, and so I think that's probably where the three originally came from, but this is kinda, this is how we've been practicing in our governance meeting typically, is if there's three trustees that have requested something, it goes on the agenda. So that's just what that means and so that's why that is there. And so that's just clarity.
Yeah.
Like.
I think we just wanted.
I think Jacob interpreted that correctly.
Yeah. I think we just wanted feedback from the, from the trustees. Is that something that you're all okay with adding? Are you, do you wanna have a conversation about the shall and must? Yes, ma'am? Trustee Ashi, sorry.
So I think that I am, am in support of a may, mainly because there are multiple ways by which you can address the topics. And I think we've even discussed that tonight. Yeah, and there's been talk, discussions of small group opportunities and other things. And so to say that it has to always be solved by the agenda, I think is limiting and it is what lends, lends our meetings to go very late. Um, we have two trustees who have already left. Um, and this is a position that we want to make tenable for people, um, to be able to do while they have other outside obligations. And so while I don't have a, I, I, I think it, one of the reasons that we have officer elections is to have those people that can sit and say, there's more than one way for us to solve this problem or to discuss this topic. And while I think for the majority of the time, it's probably going to end up on the agenda, I think the more limiting we are with it, that, um, it paints, it paints us in a cover, in a corner from a governance standpoint. So I would support it saying may, meaning it can, if that's deemed that that's the best way for us to effectively solve or to discuss a topic.
So I wonder if there is a, a middle ground here that instead of it automatically goes on, um, after those other outlets. Sometimes we do, often we do find those outlets are adequate, um, but, but maybe that the officers don't have the op, the option to completely close it off if three trustees after that process would like to re-request it. And at that point, maybe it comes back on, that we have just that extra step in there to, to be sure that the request remains a request. And if someone after all of that still feels like it's something that needs to be, um, discussed publicly, that we can do it that way maybe instead. And that, that might split the difference here.
But, because it could, I mean, it would basically go through the same process. And to me, the board officers would then be able to say, you know what, we had small group meetings, we had one-on-one meetings, we had whatever we had, and it's still coming back to us to be on the agenda. And I, I just have faith that they would go, you know what, looks like we do need to put this on the agenda. What we did last time was not sufficient to answer the questions. So I'm not sure that I feel like it needs to be. So can, so can describe, can, like, so this, 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 and like painting us into a position.
Trustee Foster.
Um, these types of discussions, by the way, are my least favorite, uh, this minutia. And I get that it's super important. Uh, could, can one member, President Rodriguez, um, request of any officer that something be on the agenda?
Currently, uh, yes. We, then we, what, what happens is then we have a discussion in the governance committee and try to prioritize that based on all kinds of different criteria and whether or not a one-on-one meeting with different board members is enough, a small group meeting, whether it needs to go on the agenda.
So, so given that, um, if we go with what Trustee Ashi, what So, so given that, if we go with what trustee Ashi, what you're suggesting, there's no difference between one and three. So the, the purpose of the three would be to compel an outcome. So the, the, the question that we have to basically ask and answer, and trustee Ashi has stated one side of it, which is, I trust that it'll get on the agenda. The, the implied in raising the issue in the first place is that there's not a sense that it will automatically get on the agenda. So to me, that's what it boils down to. Do we think it's going to get on the agenda or not, you know, by three people raising it? I lean towards the notion that, you know, what's going on here is that there's a sense that things aren't getting on to the agenda. I mean, just let's just be candid. And hence the need to create a mechanism that says, under these circumstances, it needs to get on the agenda. I kind of lean towards supporting that, simply because if we are at that point, it, probably the other things have been exhausted and we haven't gotten there. And three people are getting together saying, my goodness, we got to do this. So I think maybe it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a discussion of, with a level of candor and transparency that might make people uncomfortable, but I don't really care, because I think we'll get through it quicker if we just deal with it. Are the things getting on the agenda, that we need to get on the agenda or not? And if they're not, let's build in the mechanism. And if they are, then let's not create four more pages of a document.
Yeah, I think one way we're addressing it is by making sure that we're doing these board information meetings and having all the information on the agenda, which we did a long, a while ago. I think the other way is that we do provide a list of all the issues that are being considered for the agenda. That's another way we're doing it. So to me, it's sort of like the will of the board. Like, what, what would you all like to, you all want to try this or, or do it a different way?
I'm, I'm with Kevin. I mean, I'm supportive of, of having that safety valve, that I think often we go through those other steps and we don't need it. But I do think the board officers are kind of the standard way. And I think, you know, three people is a significant part of the board and not a majority, but I think sometimes things need to be heard, and I think there's value in having that option. And I don't get the sense of having it be abused, but, because we do have these other mechanisms. So I would say we try it, and I'm happy to revisit the policy again in six months again, if, if we want to commit to that and look at it again.
Trustee Lugo?
Well, this isn't going to be a surprise. First of all, I don't mind talking about these issues. It's all about process, right? Like, if you don't get the process right, then how can the public feel confident in the outcome? The other thing is, you know, I'm kind of really into data, and what was interesting as I was hearing trustee Foster talk about, you know, the senses that things aren't getting on the agenda. So I pulled up the governance meeting notes. So for, for the folks out in TV land, every, what, once a month? How, how, twice a month? So twice a month, the board officers, so that's the board president, vice president, and secretary, so President Rodriguez, VP Wagner, and secretary Singh. Y'all get together, talk about whatever issues are on y'all's agenda, and then one of those items is also to look at what requests have come from other trustees. Some of the requests come from one trustee. Some are then signed off, signed off or supported by two trustees, and they just kind of languish there on the agenda request sheet. I'm, I'm over here looking at my laptop screen. So I just kind of hang out there for perpetuity, I guess, I don't know. And then, oh, we have agenda request items where three trustees have requested that the topic be discussed. And again, it just kind of sits there. And so it's interesting to me to hear, well, it should be a may, not a shall, because there are other options by which those agenda item requests could be addressed. And I think for me, at least, if that were to have been practiced, I could probably go along with a may, but I prefer a shall.
The one, the one thing that I would add, though, trustee Lugo, just on the process perspective, is that we, we do do these governance meetings with administration. So Dr. Mays and Dr. Reach are also in attendance, as we try to make sure that whatever we're asking for, the administration can give to us in a timely manner, or if they need more time, we deal with that issue. So I think we have one, two, three, four trustees. I think what we'll do is, Dr. Reach, if you'd reach out to the other trustees, or I'm, I'm looking at one of you all, either the board council or, or Dr. Reach, to get some input from the other colleagues that are not here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's interesting, because in A.J. Crable's notes, like in his, the version that he created, that was based on our meeting, I'm, I'm kind of feeling a little disconnect here, because his version does not reflect the idea of three trustees requesting an item.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what we've been doing for the last year.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember we even had discussed a way to automate, what do you call it? Like, voting up items, you know, as a way to get it? So I'm just wondering how that was left off of A.J.'s version? Because basically, the sequence was, he sent something out, we, we practiced, we developed a practice, which I really like the three, because, and, and going through all the steps, because I would say like most of the things that I request end up getting resolved through small groups and some of these other things, which I'm cool with, you know?
Yeah.
But then there are some things where I'm like, no, this needs to be out there. And so, and if I can wrestle up two others, or if two others want to vote that, they do. So I'm just kind of wondering, how did, what was the origin? Because that's how, all right, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how we've been operating for the past, since, as long as I've been secretary, I think.
I think part of it was, now, this is like right in the middle of COVID pandemic, so correct me if I'm, if I can't remember. I think A.J.'s task was to ensure that he was putting in writing the pattern and practices that we've done, and also making suggestions about things that are best practices, I think, in other boards around governance. So between those two things, that was supposed to be the culmination of this in writing, but there was also an acknowledgement, I think, by A.J. It's like, look, I may not have captured everything, here's the document back, what are you all thinking about, about it? And so we did that as a committee of the whole, just because I want to make sure, because policy usually goes through our policy committee. I think we had done this in a retreat where it was the policy of, of the committee of the whole, if you will, the entire board. So I think part of it is just, one, how do we recognize the pattern and practice that we're doing? And then, two, transparently making sure we're having these kinds of discussions, which are not some of our trustees' favorite topics, as we've already heard, and others, this is, this is, this is an important topic. I think from my perspective, this is a, a governance issue, that it's like, what, what does the will of the board want to do? And that's why I think we have four board members that have said, let's try it out. We have two board members that are not here.
Three.
Three board members that are not here, thank you. And so we'll just get their feedback, and if one of them says yes, we, we, we put it in there.
Okay. Yeah, but I think with the way, and I agree with that process, I just feel like we should frame this as, we have been doing this. Correct. I mean, as board president, we've been in governance meetings together.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree. I think we've been doing, we've been doing it other than the shall piece. I don't think we've been like, three trustees and it automatically gets in. I think what we have done is, actually, whether it's an individual or three trustees or four trustees, as long as the board has asked for something, we have worked with the administration and our board council as well to say, because sometimes it's an executive session matter. And so it's like, okay, one trustee is interested, you know, have a meeting with them. Or if more of the board is interested, then let's have small group meetings. And if out of that grows a need to put it on the agenda, then we put it on the agenda. And I think one of, as a may, and I think one of the things that's happened is, there's a healthy tension around the idea that everything gets on the agenda at some, not, not everything. It's just the things that go through that process then get on the agenda. I think we, as the officers, have been pretty open about making sure that these things get on there. Maybe sometimes not as timely as some trustees would like, but at the end of the day, now we're getting the healthy tension and feedback from board saying, hey, it's 10 o'clock and I need to go home. Or it's 2:00 in the morning and we need to go home. And right now, as I, sorry, I tapped this thing, it's 11:00. And so I think there's somewhere a healthy balance between the two, and I think that's where the responsibility of the board officers to kind of try to manage all that and make it look like.
So I think what you've just described is what's in this version, which is, even if, even if three trustees request something, it still goes through that vetting process. And I would say, I don't know, I would say probably more than half the time it ends up being resolved in some other way.
Yeah, I think that what trustee Lugo was showing in that thing, in that, in that list, is I think, as she was saying, languaging, I think some of them do stay on there, and then all of a sudden, they're off, because it's neither, it's been resolved, it's not a timely issue anymore, it's been there, and that's part of the, of the governance structure. I think the only question, the only question I think for, for us is around the shall or may.
Yeah.
And I think what I hear for our trustee saying is, yeah, let's try shall, and let's see if that's, if that works better for, for us as a board. Because at the end of the day, this is about us as a board and what processes we use. So I think we've heard, yes?
Well, trustee Singh, are you saying that what we've been doing?
Is shall. I have been in governance meetings, okay? I have been in governance meetings, and we have gone through all of the little potential remedies. And I say, well, there are three trustees who have put this on, and even if all three officers don't agree that it should go on, it goes on the agenda. Now, that's only happened a small handful of times, because as I mentioned, usually it does get resolved, but there have been one or two times.
So if it gets resolved.
Then it's, it's no big deal.
But shall now requires you to put it on the agenda.
Shall, no, the way I think that this is written is that if three trustees ask for an agenda item, it goes through this process of vetting. Like, hey, are we sure it needs to go on the agenda? You know, can we just do a small group or whatever? And if the three people are like, yeah, that's cool, we could do a small group, then we do a small group. And that's happened many times. But if the three people are like, no, we really think this needs to be a public discussion, then it gets on the agenda. And I can't, Jacob, you know better than I do, but I don't think there have been a whole lot of times where the three officers, like, where it's been like something that no, like, the three officers were like, no, that shouldn't be on there, but there were three trustees who wanted it. And like, you know, that, like, I can't think of, like, I don't remember, maybe there have been a couple.
I think the, the one, the one issue I can think of, I think is like, and maybe I'm thinking, because it's 11, I'm thinking really sequentially logical, like, after those things happen, then they must be on the next, a next agenda. But I don't think we've been that rigid. I think we've been like, it gives, it needs to get in the agenda, and then we figure out where.
Like, when? It doesn't have to be like on the next one, that like we all, because then we're like, okay, like, we're not going to be like totally like.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that. It's explained as well.
Yeah.
So it's, it's more of a shall, but it's a shall that we still, we still go through all the other options. And then if the three people who asked for it are like, nope, this needs to be a public discussion, then it has to go on there. It's a shall. It's kind of like calling a special meeting where, because what's going to happen, here's like the unintended consequence. Our policy does allow three trustees to call a special meeting. Now, if we're in a situation where we can't get an agenda item on, but we can call a special meeting, now we're going to have three trustees, if they really wanted to, calling special meetings left and right. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I think one about the special emergency meetings, there's certain legally defined terms there, and I think doing it this way opens up, it makes it a little bit more flexible, adaptable. And I think, like I said, if we just get one more trustee to, to say this, then we'll just put it in as, as the shall. And I think the only question is like operationally, because I think in my mind, when, when you say shall, I hear then immediately the next meeting.
No. And we can put language in there, like it shall be scheduled for upcoming meetings or something.
There you go.
Because that's what, I mean, I was trying to really make this match what is actually happening.
Yeah. And that, that matches more about what we're doing, like, it shall be scheduled versus it shall be placed on there.
The next, no, and it doesn't even say that, but yeah.
Well, so, I mean, what you say is, a board member submits an item, it goes through the process. If the requesting board member agrees with whatever recommendation, they'll accept it. If the requesting board member does not agree, and if at least three board members request the item be placed on the agenda, the item shall be placed on the agenda for an upcoming meeting.
Yeah.
So you.
That's exactly.
Basically, it says, once we get to the threshold of three people are requesting it, it shall be on the agenda.
Yeah.
This is minutia, but I mean, it's important.
It's important when it's my, my issue, or, or somebody's. I mean, I don't mean that like my, my, I don't mean my issue, but.
I just want to note.
President Rodriguez, I'm being very good. I said that I don't like this stuff, and yet I am engaging because it really is important.
And I don't think there's anything on tonight's agenda that was anything that I requested, FYI. Y'all are talking about that tonight's meeting is long and two people have left. I don't think there's any trustee-generated items on here, are there, unless I missed one, but.
And I would say, trustee Singh, I actually think you and I are saying the same thing. I don't think we're that far off. What I was just saying is that if we, what I didn't want to do is to have that, if three, then it's absolutely on the agenda.
No, no, the way it's written is that.
Which I appreciate, and I appreciate that you've written, you, it was written with a different intent. When I read it, I read it as, if it's three, then it's there.
No.
So I think that's, that's the differentiation for me.
I'm looking at Christine, like, can you please do that? Can you tweak it, please, or Jacob? So that it's more clear that, because that was the intent. It's like, because sometimes it does get resolved other ways, which is, I'm totally off, like, fine.
Which is what I think both, that's, I think, would be the goal of everybody sitting up here, is there's more than one way to solve a problem, and that just gives us the option to solve a problem. That's not what I mean. But there's more than one way to get information.
That's right.
And answer questions, and, and sometimes it's on the dais, and sometimes it's in other forms.
Agreed.
I think part, sorry, trustee Foster, I think part of it too is that the way that the policy is written, is that you have bullet points rather than numbers, or, or there needs to be a clause where it says if, that if, because that, that part's not clear. Because if I would have read it, you know I would have found a loophole. I'd be like, oh, oh, heck, I'm going to go to three, so.
I want to check, I want to do a little check, understanding, check for understanding with trustee Ashi. So are we in agreement then, that if three trustees request something, and it goes through, hey, could we do a small group? Hey, could we do like this thing or that thing? And it gets resolved that way, which I think it usually has been? But still, those three are like, no, we feel like this needs to be a public conversation on an upcoming meeting that we jointly schedule. Are we in agreement?
I'm in agreement that that's what's been happening.
Yeah. Are you in agreement that that's what should be in here?
I am in a space that.
You can be persuaded.
I am in a space that, that I, I have about 85 days, so.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes.
I was going to try to help you and say, trustee Ashi reserves the right to review the board council's edits to it, making it.
And at the same time, in that vein, I'm also thinking of the person that may be sitting in my seat, who most likely has a full-time job, and I want to make this job tenable for anybody who is sitting in this seat.
Yeah.
And, and part of time management is us managing our agendas.
It's 83 days, by the way.
Thank you.
Not that I'm counting, but I am.
President Rodriguez, as a, as a, I guess, a final comment from me, we, we're kind of talking about two things here, you know, which is one, ensuring things get on the agenda, but then there's this side conversation that's really important about the, the, what's implied is that our meetings might be just a tad long. I think we need to begin to name this as a profound equity issue, that the, the, how That the, the, how late we go. When I, when I think of the reality of the folks who could serve, who cannot serve, we have a really big problem. And even in the context of the service of the current board, we have a really big problem in that it is incredibly difficult for some trustees to serve. You know, to the point where their service is heroic, as far as I'm concerned. If you have to leave here at one and get up at four and you keep doing it, that is above and beyond. And my feeling is that we need to begin to accommodate the reality that service in our nation should not be predicated on your class position. And that's where we are. I am able to serve because I have a particular type of job. I work very hard, but I kind of make my own schedule beyond nine hours of teaching each week. That's not fair. I mean, I enjoy that I get to serve, but I would like more really sharp people to have the opportunity. So I want that to be a more named part of our deliberations going forward.
And thank you for bringing that up. I, I also just want to point out to the community that your example is not a hypothetical about our, one of our colleagues working and getting up at four in the morning. That's actually, that's actually reality. So it's, it's not like it's a hypothetical. Trust, I'll let trustee Singh have the last word on this one before, before we go to the, there's a second item here.
Because I appreciate that. At the same time, I don't want that to be the excuse because we all know that sometime, like, let's take the police KPIs, for example. That was on the agenda request list for the longest time. And the only reason it got up here was because we had three trustees, because the administration, I'll be honest, did not want to do it. And that was my perception. And that's something that the, this board.
That's why I want to separate the conversation.
Exactly. So we cannot use, I, I, I want us to, I mean, I agree, yes, it's an equity issue, but we shouldn't be using that as the reason to, because it's, it's an equity issue also, I think, to limit participation by board members to bring agenda up and forward.
Because I'm for this change and I'm for the equity.
Yeah, we just need to talk faster. That'll shorten our meetings.
In that spirit, we have one other change that I, we kind of, I wanted, I wanted to encourage the staff some input around. And help me here, trustee Singh, the second one is the item would allow any trustee to remove an item from consent during, during the meeting. I think the conversation we had, which I think is important to kind of have in public, is that there's a, there's an, to me, another healthy tension here where it's like, one, is the governance of the board and getting through the business of the board. And those items being on the agenda and having notice in the board information meeting. And then obviously some opportunity in between that and the board voting meeting to, to move it out. And I think one of the things is that I think for most, well, I'll, I'll, some of the, some of the board members don't want surprises about removing something. But I think you and I had a good conversation about, well, what if you learn something new? How do we, how do we make that happen? And I think one of the things is like, and then the other, on the other hand is, how can we make sure that a trustee doesn't use that as a tactic to, to slow down the process? And at the same time, how do we allow flexibility? Because in, in the practice of it, it rarely happens. And is there some kind of recognition or way that it's not just like a trustee has the right to do that? And, and I think we, we had talked and we hadn't come up with any language. And I don't think Christine, you, you had any other language too, because I think we were talking about like in an extraordinary manner. And it might just be making ourselves feel good about putting some words, some words in there about like in extraordinary circumstances or in some, I don't know exactly how we accomplish that. I don't know if Christine, if you want to say anything or.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can come up with some words about extraordinary circumstances. But I would just say that my observation is it doesn't, it's not like y'all are doing it a whole lot anyway.
We're doing it rarely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Trustee Boswell, sorry.
I would really agree that, that taking that away is kind of a solution without a problem, in my opinion. And I am a believer in Robert's Rules of Order, that it's a system that has evolved in bodies over a very long period of time that does include that option for one person to remove something from a consent agenda. And I think it's a check and balance against a majority that is different. And it lets minority voices have a say in a different way. And, you know, I think we all know that things are on our agenda two weeks out. But I don't think the public always knows that and things do come up at the last minute. Again, I don't think we do it often, but I, I am a believer in a system that has worked for many organizations for a very long time, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, Robert's Rules are clear that any individual can remove an item from consent for any reason. And it is, it is just a standard check. It should not be used often, it should not be used lightly, but I'm, I'm all for it. And, and, you know, months and months and months ago, I was, you know, pounding my fist on the table about it, not literally, but, you know, I felt very strongly about it. And in that period of time, I don't think I've ever once invoked, you know, asked for it. And I continue to feel very strongly that it's very important as, as just a tool, as something that's available. The second thing I'll mention tangentially is that my understanding of consent is that you don't talk about it afterwards. And one of our practices is to go to consent and then talk about it, which kind of defeats the purpose of consent. So, you know, while we're playing around with this, one thing that we can do is consent. We approve those items, we vote on them, we don't talk about them. Because that's the idea is to streamline the meetings on those items that are completely, they're self-explanatory or they're, and or non-controversial.
I think we have a recommendation for the Roberts Rules of Order for a hybrid consent item. To governance do.
Which go over really well at 11:15.
They sure do. They do. Any other comments, trustees? Okay, so I think we are good. And just need to get the input from our three trustees. Any other questions on that item?
I think this is so boring. This is like a recipe for diminished public participation.
They are not going to be worried it's on Facebook or not on Facebook at this moment in time.
This ends the section on the information reports on the administration. At this time, we'll now move into the preview of the upcoming regular board agendas. This will allow the public and trustees the opportunity to review the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting. AISD staff is available. Answer any question for tonight's preview. We'll begin tonight with item eight, which is the agenda preview for upcoming board administration items. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Selection of a delegate alternate to the Texas Association of School Boards? Or the contract for election services? If not, I'm going to move to item nine, academics and curriculum. Any questions on the optional flexible school day program or the interlocal agreement between the Texas State University and Austin ISD? Okay.
I did have a question about the hubs, 10.4.
10.4, so the next session is item 10, business and finance. And please note, the administration was made aware of the need to move item 10.4 to the abstention consent agenda for the regular voting meeting, so that will be moved for the next meeting. So trustees, are there any questions on these items? I think I heard trustee Singh and trustee Lugo have questions around 10.4.
Yeah. So do you want to add? Okay, so first of all, I, I was wondering, I noticed that this item was for $35,000, which is below our threshold. So I guess the first question is, are we, why is this coming to us?
So trustee Singh, that actually is directly related to why we needed to pull it from consent and to the items for a separate vote. The reason it's on there is because it's an interlocal agreement with the University of Texas. But when we originally read it, if you look at this agenda item, you probably noticed it doesn't reference the University of Texas in it. So we're going to make that adjustment for the upcoming meeting and it'll be on the abstention vote, recognizing that we do have a trustee who regularly abstains from votes with the University of Texas.
Okay, so for the interlocal contracts, we don't have to meet the $100,000.
Any interlocal agreement requires board approval.
Got it. Okay. And I guess the other question I had, so it sounds, it just seems that this is a contract that would provide professional development to local hubs in helping them build their own capacity, right?
Correct.
Okay. What is the goal of that? And like why, like, can you give me a little bit of background on why we're doing that?
Yes, so the goal is to build capacity within the district as far as bringing in the maximum number of hubs to participate in our procurement process. And so the last time that we did, what was that, the name of that study that we, disparity study, was in 2015. And so we are currently in the process of doing an additional disparity study this year in 2022, 2023. But the goal is to really increase the participation of our hubs. So we have some board goals with, as far as our hub participation. So the goal with this training is to maximize the pool of not, it's geared towards new hubs that are coming into the area and the community. And so sometimes we get questions as far as from individuals wanting to know the process of forming a hub. What is the paperwork? What is the requirements? And, and that only, not only works for Austin ISD, but also enables them to participate in the city of Austin procurement opportunities as well as Travis County. So the, the firm that you see here or the organization that's part of UT, IC squared, is actually also being used by Travis County and the city of Austin to increase their hub participation. So at the end of the day, it's geared more towards the newer firms and training not only on the procurement process, but also how to access capital. What are the bonding requirements when you bid on these type of projects and things like that?
Okay. And so are we, are we going to be, are we scheduled at any time in the year to get like a review of our hub program?
So we, we do have a, a presentation to the board regarding our hub program and are we meeting our goals and.
Okay, when does that typically happen?
I think we usually have a progress report on that item and it's regularly scheduled.
Early fall, okay. Okay. And so I guess it was based on that, like, are we not meeting our goals or something? And it's due to hubs not having the capacity? Or are there other reasons that you feel like we're, we're not meeting our?
One is to ensure that we continue to remain as close to our goals as possible. But two, to, to give new firms the opportunity to learn about our processes and, and maintain that pool of opportunity for, for these type of firms to bid on, on our projects.
Okay. And you said that there was another disparity study coming up.
Yeah, so that takes place this school year and the, the projected goal for it to be complete is March of 2023.
Okay, and will that be presented to the board in some way?
It will.
Perhaps a small group.
No, actually, I mean, yeah. The disparity study is the legal foundation for how you have historically underutilized business programs. Without it, you can't have them from, from a legal constitutional perspective.
Okay.
But we, we can have that as part of the presentation.
That'd be good. And this may get off topic, but I just want to put a bug in, because a couple of years ago, we, we canceled like our, our hub program for non-bond, non-construction work, so like for professional services. And I would love for us to revive that. And I don't know if that's any part of the disparity study or if they're going to talk to trustees at any point.
It's separate, but I would second that.
Yeah, I don't know why we did that. I never got an answer. But for some reason we did that and it doesn't make sense to me. And I know trustee Anderson has brought up a couple of times for the dais, like, why aren't we, you know,
Yeah, part of it may have been due to budget, because if, currently the, the hub department specifically addresses bond type activities. And so there, the salaries for that department and the expenses are paid out of bond funds. If we move towards also vendors that are on the operating side, then we would have to kind of look at a portion of the salaries coming from there. Yeah, it's probably a little bit off, off the topic, but we can talk about it in governance committee. We'll put it. But we can work on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Ed, do you want to introduce your colleagues?
Yes, this is Gerald Green. He is also a member of the hub program for the district.
Welcome.
And so he's here presenting. I need as well.
Oh, I was going to ask, yeah, I'm going to ask you a question. You made it all the way out here. Late in the day. So, um, yeah, what, what has been your experience?
Late evening, Dr. Mays, board president Rodriguez and trustees. My experience with the hub department being involved since 2017, when it was formed in 2016, so I'm one of the, well, I'm the eldest person in the hub department. But my experience thus far is that we are making considerable changes. We have a way to go. We are not meeting our minority participation goals. And some of that is due to what Mr. Ramos was explaining about the interlocal agreement in that we need to provide additional resources to minority businesses in order for them to participate in the procurement process and have a sure standing on winning projects. It's one thing to send out bid opportunities to minority contractors, but it's another thing to assist them with the resources they need in order to submit winning bids, to have capacity to do the work that we have on the streets.
That's great. And thank y'all for, again, y'all just give us those nuggets, we're just laying it out there. So yes, I, I totally knew that we weren't meeting our hub. So thank you for mentioning that. And also I really, I promise I'll give you a moment to speak. And I know firsthand from reviewing proposals from vendors, it, it is tough. It is really tough. On the vendor side, they don't always have the expertise, the background, right? Their, their expertise is in whatever service or product they're, they deliver. So I was actually really excited to see that this was on here. And then I'll, I'll yield to.
And, and one of the things that we're also looking for is opportunities in reviewing our processes. One of the things that we're looking at is if the 22, 2022 bond does move forward, that we are looking at the procurement methods that we currently use as a district. One of the procurement methods that was lacking in 2017 was an invitation for bid. So that weighs more heavily on the, the, the price that is actually submitted. So one of the plans that we have is to include that procurement method in a 22, 2022 projects if that, that does move forward. We're also looking at our evaluation system and kind of talking with legal to see how we can improve that to, to really provide opportunities for all participants that, that submit into our procurement.
I just got a second wind because procurement is my jam. It is. I'm not an attorney, never pretend to be, don't want to get in any trouble. I respect you, Christine. She's our board counsel. So I'm so excited to hear that because yes, procurement, like which vehicle, which, well, I, I call it vehicle because that's what we call it, but which type of procurement document do you prepare? You know, how do you get vendors' attention so that they can bid for it? That's kind of the cyclical thing, right? Prepare them and stuff. And then the other piece is evaluation of the proposals. Oh, that is, I'm, I'm excited.
Yeah, and we're providing.
I'm going to circle back. It's in my little noggin now.
So trustee Lugo, the team has been hard at work seeing that we have this bond in front of us and trying to address some of the systemic barriers that we know that exist for, for people within this community. And so, Dr. Holly, upon you all giving me this opportunity, we did sit down and identify that as one of our large projects that we wanted to take on along with one other project. And so Ed and the hub team are committed to identifying those areas that.
And so, uh, Ed and the hub team are committed to identifying those areas that we need to work, and putting in the intervention and support, again, everybody being able to participate in, in potential opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The trustees, the next section is eleven, Human Resources. Any questions on these three items? Hearing none, I'm going to move to section twelve, Policy. Trustees, any questions on any of these? Trustee, trustee Singh has a question on purchasing and acquisition on behalf of trustee Lugo.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ramos, this was, my questions are kind of what we had talked about earlier today, and I believe that was policy C H local? Is that the one? Okay, I think this policy has to do with some of the conversations that we've had on the board about bringing contracts that would get renewed, but if they were over a hundred thousand dollars, they would still come to us, or something like that. You know, like, we, we kind of made an acceptance. Just speak, trustee Ashley. Tell me what it's about. I'm tired.
We've had two months, we, we spoke about this in May, and had the procurement department come and speak to us. They looked at both C H local and C H E local, which work in conjunction with each other to address contracts and procurement, for the exact things that we talked about. So when we, as a policy committee, came together to talk about it, what we said is we wanted to be able to, we wanted to be able to allow our organization to be efficient, and yet to understand when contracts that are multi-year were going to be coming up. So the sentence that you see in C H local, which is, uh, under the board approval, so there's the part that says the contracts for a term of one year or more above a hundred thousand annually are the ones that are required, meaning in a single year, they're a hundred thousand. The next sentence that you see that deals with renewals says that the superintendent shall inform the board on a monthly basis of the renewal of a contract previously approved by the board, meaning we would, should be receiving on a monthly basis in our board updates, a list of the upcoming contracts that will be looked at, because they went through us that there is an entire review process that happens. It is not an automatic renewal. And if you go to the last sentence of C H E local, you will see that it says, and I'm going to want to read it so it may, you can see it, it says, "A contract shall specify a term and shall not state that it may be renewed automatically. Renewals in one-year increments up to five years may be provided." So it was the combination of the two that allowed us to still function, but to be notified when the contracts are coming up. It's not an automatic renewal. It has a renewal process. The board will be notified of those that are coming up for renewal, even before they're renewed. So it comes to us, we see it, and we can go, isn't that great? And that was, um, what we found to be in speaking with the procurement department, which still allowed them to be effective in their contracts, especially those that are, are less than a hundred thousand dollars in an annual in, in a year, but, but that would notify us about these ones that are coming forward.
Okay. Um, and so I just want to double check, though, things like the API contract, mental health providers, like Gramercy or whoever, Literacy First, Austin Voice, all that, like, those would still come to us if it's over a hundred thousand?
Total, total.
In a, in a
In a year, in a year.
The original contract, well, if it's a multi-year contract, then the board would approve it as such. And then the renewals would come in the form of a, a monthly, or monthly board report, where you would see those coming, coming.
Okay, so we would approve, so for API, let's just take APIs. I'm not picking on them. It's a great program, but I'm, I know it's a big one. So is that, do you know, is that like one that we would just approve as a multi-year, or is that something that would still come to us for approval every year?
So that is a multi-year contract? So when you approve the original contract, it's for, let's say, a period of three years? And then every renewal, uh, it goes through a process internally through administration, and then you would receive a report that it's coming up for renewal?
Oh.
So we would, so we, I'm sorry, so, um, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
So the board would get informed
Yeah.
before the renewal, but the renewal was approved.
If we really care.
If we want to provide input, that's the time to provide input.
And if you want to add it as an agenda item, you should.
That's, that's good.
That was really good.
Are you telling me I need to start reading the board updates? Dang.
That was good.
You know I read those as soon as I hit. So, okay. I think that makes sense. And then, so the time, if we, if we as a board, kind of like we did recently with that special education contract, I think it was, where we were like, eh, we want it to come to us every single year, like, we need to take care of that at the initial
When you vote on it on the dais.
Like, the first time. It makes, okay, we got to pay attention to that. Okay, thank you.
Trustees, any other questions on I, agenda item twelve, policy? Hearing none, I'm going to move to section thirteen, Other. Trustees, are there any questions on the easement at Blazer Elementary School?
I have ten questions.
I, actually, I do have one question, Dr. Reach. The, and only because, um, these are not consent agenda items, right? Uh, the only reason is because I see that three of them, one, two, three, four of them actually have conflicts of interest by some of our board members. So these would not be consent items.
All, all five of them will be on abstention consent.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. Just, just for the trustees' benefit, so none of these are on the consent agenda that'll all be, they're all going to be pulled out because a trustee has a conflict of interest in. Okay. Any questions?
I have a comment. Just a shout out to, for thirteen point three, um, this interlocal agreement for the, I think this is the right one. Is that the Austin Voices one? Yeah. So I just wanted to acknowledge, really glad to see this. My understanding is that this is new funding that came about through the support of the Austin City Council, with council members Cassar and Tobo last year after they worked with Austin Voices, so I just wanted to shout them out and say thank you. My understanding is this is not, that this is a new source of funding. This is not like part of what the city council normally does for Austin Voices and A I S D.
It's a, a grant on top of their yearly commitment of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars for F R Cs.
And this is for how much money?
Five hundred something?
Okay.
Five hundred and twenty thousand.
That's awesome. And then I also just want to give a shout out to Literacy First, and maybe I can be talked into having a small group instead of putting it in an agenda item. But I do, I do, I've got to give them a shout out because, and this is why I, I like this program. As fiduciaries, it's kind of like our job to invest in things that have a really high academic return on investment. And our board made a big investment in the D M G report like four years ago to do that, but then we just dropped it, as far as I can tell, and we never really followed up on that, and I kind of feel like one of, one, what I would love to see us do is start kind of reviving that whole notion of looking at academic return on investment and seeing which programs actually have quantitative, are making a quantitative difference in our student outcomes compared to other programs. And Literacy First is like, that and Breakthrough Austin are the only two that I know of that have like, like really strong quantitative research supporting them, so.
So that's Dr. Holly's second project.
Okay. Sorry.
No, I mean, we talked about just a, a consistent equitable programmatic evaluation of each one of these tools to make sure that we are getting what we pay for, uh, and that we are consistently aligning those outcomes, what, what we're trying to do in, in terms of our strategic, strategic scorecard and everything else.
I appreciate that. And there are many other good programs there, but like, these are the ones, I just shouted out those two because they actually do like quasi-experimental research design, uh, like randomized controlled trials and all that kind of jazz, which impresses my socks off, so.
Awesome. So trustees
While we're thanking the city, I also want to thank the city for the victory tutorial, because they're working on their budget right now, talking about their longstanding support of that program, of primetime, and of our parent support specialists, so thank you.
So, trustees, I think this ends our regular agenda preview unless there's any other questions. And if not, secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by our trustee who has eighty-three days left, Ashi, to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. This meeting is now adjourned at eleven fifty-four P M. Thank you.